A wonderful place at it in its heyday. I think that it's had its time and I'm looking forward to the little shopping mall and the fitness center. I think it'll be fun.
I think it's necessary and if people don't think so, they need to get over it because it's really the time is now.
If everything goes according to plan, Wine Trob hopes to get started on the project at the end of the year. I'm Yana K for LA this week.
Meanwhile, the adjacent Sportsman's Lodge Hotel will remain the same. A new study by a major university supports what many working women have suspected for years, that their male counterparts make considerably more money, and not just nationally, but locally, from San Pedro to the Valley. As Gil Reyes reports, the city is taking action.
There were female cops and female firefighters. All kinds of working women from male-dominated fields gathered to hear results of a first-of-its-kind study. The conclusion's clear: even two kids in attendance.
A lot of women don't get the same opportunities as men and I think that even though we're a little different, we should have the same opportunities.
The report, conducted by Mount St. Mary's University, is called "The Status of Women and Girls in Los Angeles." It examined wage disparities between the sexes specifically within city limits. Results showed women earn only 84 cents for every dollar men make. Not surprising to Valley Councilmember Nuri Martinez. The only female on the 15-member LA City Council urged more women to run for public office.
Women who run get elected at the same rate as men. We just need to ensure that they're taking the risk and running for office. And many aren't because they just don't have the support system that enables them to still take care of their families at home.
LA Mayor Eric Garcetti says he's taken steps to lend support. In a dramatic shift from previous administrations, three out of four of his handpicked deputy mayors are women. And out of 12 new hires for general manager positions, half are also women. With his wife Amy Wakeland in attendance, Garcetti urged more men to lend support for the next generation of women.
We want to see a level playing field that every girl in the city can grow up and say, "That's what I want to be." And I can see somebody there and I can see myself there as well.
Other people are fighting like battles that maybe I don't know about, so I should be an ally and help them have the same equality as I do.
To help close the city's gender gap. At Mount St. Mary's University, Gil Reyes for LA this week.
Findings also show women of color at a distinct disadvantage, even though they comprise 72% of the city's female population. A limited-edition postage stamp featuring author and poet Maya Angelou also features a glaring error: the quote on the stamp isn't hers. But that didn't stop longtime fans from attending the stamp's Los Angeles unveiling. Here's Andrew Tarr.
One, two, three.
Despite an embarrassing misquote from the U.S. Postal Service, friends of the late Dr. Maya Angelou say she would've been flattered. The Postal Service honors the acclaimed author and actress by placing her image on a commemorative stamp. Actor Robert Hooks remembers Angelou.
I would describe her as just a giant in the black cultural movement and in the cultural movement of the United States.
Angelou broke barriers with her 1969 autobiography entitled "I Know Why the Caged Bird Sings," a vivid depiction of African-American life in the South, which leads us to the quote on the stamp. "A bird doesn't sing because it has an answer; it sings because it has a song." The Washington Post reports the words don't actually belong to Angelou, but to another writer, Joan Walsh Angland. The fact that both authors referenced a bird in their respective works helped fuel the confusion for decades. Despite the error, fans gathered for the forever stamp's Los Angeles unveiling at the Museum of African-American Art. While autographing event programs for fans, Councilman Herb Wesson was asked who he'd like to see on the next commemorative stamp.
What's her name? Mike? Mike? No. I am a supporter of the Tom Bradley, Mayor Tom Bradley stamp effort.
Let's just hope the U.S. Postal Service gets it right next time. I'm Andrew Tarr for LA this week.
Folks at the U.S. Postal Service aren't the only ones who've made that mistake. President Obama has also publicly attributed that quote to Angelou. The governor mandates drastic water use reductions. Water was also a hot topic at a recent UCLA symposium. And the city's garbage trucks go green as another clean fuel-fueling station opens up. These stories in City Beat. Governor Jerry Brown's mandatory order to reduce water use by 25% was met with praise by LA Mayor Eric Garcetti. The governor's announcement followed the state's snow survey that showed the snow pack at 6% of normal and at the lowest on record. The mayor had issued a directive last October for the city to cut its water consumption. Since the mayor's announcement in October, the mayor says Los Angeles has reduced its water consumption by seven gallons per capita per day, and the city is on track to meet its goal of 20% reduction by 2017. Matt Peterson, chief sustainability officer for the city of Los Angeles, was on hand recently at the UCLA Green Building Symposium to discuss the city's plan toward a future that is environmentally healthy and economically prosperous. And one of the biggest concerns toward achieving that goal is, of course, water.
We need to change how we use water. How do we make sure that that drop of water that comes from hundreds of miles away, that we see it as precious? That we no longer just keep the faucet running or water our front lawn that never gets used? And really begin to change our values and how we associate with that use of the water.
Peterson says part of that change in our value system needs to extend to our front lawns, making drought-tolerant landscaping the new normal and the object of aspiration. The LA Bureau of Sanitation recently cut the ribbon on its sixth compressed natural gas, or CNG, fueling station. This one at the West Los Angeles Sanitation District Yard. The CNG fueling station will provide natural gas fueling service to sanitation vehicles operating in the West LA Collection District.
We want to get to having 100% of our fleet on clean fuel. It's important for our neighborhoods and it's important for the city. It makes no sense to have a sanitation truck that comes to your house and picks up your trash but leaves behind invisible pollution for you to breathe.
Currently, over 75% of LA Sanitation's solid resources collection fleet uses clean A big part of downtown tourism is drawing big conventions to our convention center, and this week there was some great news as WonderCon announced its move to LA for its 2016 convention. And that's the focus of this week in tweets. WonderCon has been held in Anaheim since 2012 and before that in the Bay Area. WonderCon is considered the sister show to Comic-Con, embracing similar aspects of that show, including comics, movies, TV, animation, and more, with fans dressing up to attend autograph signings and celebrity panels. And you're seeing photos shared on Twitter with the hashtag #WonderCon2015. LA Convention Center also shared several tweets after the good news. One said #ComicsCosplayMoviesTVAnimationFans, "WonderCon will debut in LA in 2016. We can't wait." At LA Mayor's Office tweeted, "LA is where entertainment comes to life. We are proud to announce that WonderCon is coming to LA in 2016." And the 2016 WonderCon at the convention center will be held March 25th to the 27th. And according to the LA Convention Center, the projected total economic impact for LA is over $32 million over the three-day period. In this week's list of things to do, Earth Day at the Zoo, a picnic experience downtown like none you've ever had, and Alvin Ailey at the Music Center. The LA Zoo is throwing a bash to celebrate the 45th anniversary of Earth Day, and you're invited. The two-day event on Saturday and Sunday, April 18th and 19th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., will feature opportunities to explore and learn about animal conservation and preservation and sustainable living for human beings. The different stations range from one where visitors discover the range of critters living in their own backyards, to another where you can get close and personal to a desert tortoise, California state reptile. All Earth Day expo activities are included with paid admission to the zoo. The LA Zoo is located at 5333 Zoo Drive. Go to lezoo.org for more information. And this is not your ordinary picnic. On Saturday, April 18th, from noon to 4:00 p.m., grab your picnic basket of goodies and head on over to the Grand Park Event Lawn between Broadway and Spring for this one-of-a-kind communal picnic experience. You can put your creative picnic spread on display for a chance to win tickets and a picnic basket to the Hollywood Bowl. There's even butter aerobics. Event organizers will provide the cream and you provide the manpower to churn it into butter. How about bringing your own dough to bake in the Mole Bowl bread oven? Food trucks will also be on hand for the picnick-er without a picnic basket. Go to grandparkla.org for all the delicious details. And catch Alvin Ailey at the Music Center in the month of April. Led by Alvin Ailey and a group of young African-American modern dancers, a now-fabled performance in March 1958 at the 92nd Street Y in New York City changed forever the perception of American dance. Since then, the Ailey Company has gone to perform for an estimated 25 million people at theaters in 48 states and 71 countries on six continents. The Dorothy Chandler Pavilion Box Office is located at 135 North Grand Avenue downtown. Go to musiccenter.org for dates and times and ticket purchasing information. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook or check us out on Twitter. That's @latw35. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA this week.
Good morning, everyone. This is Los Angeles City Council. This is the 50th day of April. On behalf of everyone, we thank you for making sure you pay your taxes to the federal government today and that we put it to good use throughout our country. This is the City Council. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Bloomingfield, Bonn, Buscagno, Zodio, Englander, Fuentes, Fuiz, Corretts, Correa, LaBance, Martinez, Ferro Parks, Price, Wesson, 10 members present and accor. Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Englander moves. Mr. Bonn in seconds. Next order.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Martinez moves. Mr. Corretts second.
Mr. President, before running through today's agenda, there have been requests to continue items 25, 29, 30, and 31 to April 22nd, and items 32 and 33 to this Friday, April 17. And lastly, item 16, 30 days to May 15.
Without objection. Is that okay, Mr. Clerk?
Absolutely, sir.
Without objection. So now, what's next, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that brings us to items 1 through 24. They're items noticed for a public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety recommends that the lien for item 1G be reduced to $397 due to receipt of partial payments.
So on those items, 1 through 30?
24, sir.
1 through 24? Any specials on that? No specials on 1 through 24? So on the balance of those, which we call special, those who have cards?
We do have cards on items 1, 14, and 15.
Very good. On the balance. Let's open the roll on the balance, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
11 ayes.
And, Mr. President, those ordinances will go over one week for a second read unless reconsidered later with 12 members.
Absolutely. You keep a watch of that, Mr. Clerk. Thank you. Next item.
Mr. President, items 26 through 37 are items for which public hearings have been held. Committee report for item 37 has been submitted, and communications for items 34 and 35 have been submitted. We also do have cards for 34 and 35, so those should be held on the desk.
All right, so with the recommendation, we have any specials members? Mr. Buscagno?
28, item 28, please.
Item 28 special. Any others, members? Very well. Anything else? Mr. Clerk, 36? We're good on everything?
Yes, sir.
Okay. On the balance, can we vote on the balance right now?
Yes, sir.
Let's open the roll on the balance of the issues, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
11 ayes.
And again, sir, the ordinances will go over one week unless reconsidered later with 12 members.
Well, Mr. Price is right here. Mr. Price, I'm sure, has read all the ordinances. So let's reconsider the ordinances right now. Mr. Price, thank you. 12 members are here.
Okay. Mr. President, those, the ordinances that we've considered thus far would be items 2 through 7.
2 through 7?
26 and 27.
26 and 27. Very good. So on those balance, those items, members, for the ordinances.
We should first vote on reconsideration, then on...
Reconsideration. Open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, tabulate the vote on that.
12 ayes.
The matter's now before us, Mr. Clerk.
That is correct, sir.
Okay, so let's open the roll on those ordinances. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Thank you. We thank the city attorney's office for all their work on those ordinances, especially back at the headquarters across the street. Next item.
Mr. President, that brings us to items 38 through 47. They're items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Let's open the roll on consideration, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
12 ayes. Any specials members on those items? Mr. Clerk, any specials?
Sir, we do have cards on 46 and 47.
So 46 and 47. So we'll hold those on the balance, though. Let's vote on those other issues now. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
12 ayes. Next.
Mr. President, that brings us to items 48 through 50. They're items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
Mr. Correa, who's the chairman, will hold them on the desk?
Thank you, Mr. President. Items 48 and 49 are settlements of litigation, which can be voted upon in open session unless members have questions or concerns. Item 50 was waived through energy and the environment, so I defer to Mr. Fuentes on item number 50.
Got it. So let's do 48?
48 and 49.
49.
Unless members have questions.
No questions on those, Mr. Clerk?
No, sir. Mr. President, for item 48, in the case entitled Ryan Marshall et al. versus City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation to expend $975,000 in settlement. And for item 49, in the case entitled Paul Waymire versus City of Los Angeles, there's a recommendation to expend $975,000 in settlement.
Thank you. So on that issue, thank you for your work, Mr. Chairman. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
12 ayes. Mr. Fuentes, item 50, do you want it? Is it okay to vote in open session?
No, we want that special closed session.
Special closed session. Very good. We'll hold that on the desk. Now, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, that takes council back to presentations.
Very well. We haven't been there yet, so we're going to go there right now. I'm going to call on the great councilmen of the 2nd District and the 12th District for a very special officer of the Los Angeles Police Department, a very special chief. Please call him, Mr. Correa and Mr. Englander, for... Please call on Mr. Correa and Mr. Englander for the presentation. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. President, and I'm honored to be joined by the chairman of our Public Safety Committee, Mitchell Englander, in a sad, in a sense, but very important presentation today. We are recognizing today the retirement of Sandy Jo McArthur, the highest-ranking woman in the Los Angeles Police Department, somebody who has been such an important part of our city and this department for over three decades, and who is now moving on to the next stage of her life and retirement, but who will be continuing to serve the department even in her retirement. Sandy Jo has seen the Los Angeles Police Department in its best and worst times. She has risen through the ranks steadily until she's achieved this very prominent position that she has as Assistant Chief. She led the department through some very, very significant transformations. She helped to lead the implementation of the federal consent decree. She conducted the McArthur Park investigations, and she implemented counterterrorism training programs after the September 11th attacks. As, in her current assignment as Deputy Chief and Commanding Officer of Incident Management and Training Bureau, she really has been the exact right person to create a stronger sense of duty and responsibility in the department to our communities. As Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee, I've had the great honor and pleasure of working closely with Sandy Jo on the department's budget in excess of $1 billion every year, and in doing that, I could always count, as my fellow committee members could always count, on Sandy Jo as being a voice of transparency, of honesty, forthright, advocate for the district, and a strong advocate for the department, but somebody who always understood that we had the city, council, and the department have to work in partnership to achieve the best possible public safety results in the most cost-efficient way. And so I'm incredibly grateful for her compassion, her honesty, her ethics, and her strength of advocacy, and I'm definitely going to miss working with you, Sandy Jo, in this capacity. I look forward to working with you in the next stage of your service to the department and to the city, and I'd like to ask our Public Safety Chair, Mitchell Englander, as well, to say a few words.
Thank you. Thank you very much, councilman, and I had a lot of notes here that I was going to read off about all of Sandy Jo's accomplishments, but I'm going to talk from the heart. This is, this is actually, this isn't easy for me. This is bittersweet. Sandy Jo has really become a dear friend, and not just on the department, but personally for me. I have had the pleasure and opportunity, not just as a Chief of Staff, but as a council member, as the Chair of Public Safety, as the Vice Chair of Budget, to have a go-to person in one of the greatest police departments in the world, the best police department in the nation, a go-to person who, everything that Councilmember Correa said, honest, ethical, integrity, set that aside, one word, just brilliant. This woman is brilliant and always has an incredible attitude about the city, the rank and file, the department, the chief, and cares passionately about this city. And when we ever had an issue, she was my go-to person to try to figure something out. When we had an issue in working with, we were working with Maggie and Dan Gomez and trying to figure out how we're going to buy 10,000 new police radios, as an example, we had no money. The city was broke, and the radios were falling apart. Jo will tell you, he'll remember when the batteries would fall off the back and you had to duct tape them. It was ridiculous, and we went to Motorola and said, "We need 10,000 new radios." And they said, "Well, you're going to pay for them." And we said, "We don't have any money, but we need them. So how about this? You give them to us for free, finance them for three years with no interest, and we'll pay you back later." And they said, "Okay," and she helped work out the deal. When the Reserve Corps was falling apart, and it's gone through a lot of changes, and this is, we've got hundreds of reserve police officers, surgeons, lawyers, elected officials, you name it, all kinds of expertise, accountants, that bring so much to this city, their passion. They put themselves on the front line for free to protect us. They put on a uniform and a gun and a badge, and they didn't feel that they were getting the respect from the department, and they were. And this was, in fact, our chief was a reserve officer for two years before he became a full-time officer. He cares and cared deeply about the reserve program, but as everything within the city, we have a lot of other priorities as well, and there were a lot of things that needed to be done to rewrite the entire reserve manual, to complete so many things we'd been working on for about 18 years. Sandy Jo stepped up, volunteered for the position, and turned it around and rewrote the entire manual, changed state law on her own.
(Applause).
With a working group, a task force, that you put together and handpicked to get it done, on top of everything else you were doing. In fact, the Reserve Corps has never been stronger. You think about the consent decree and all the things that we have been through. Everything that she has touched has led this city and this department to be and continue to be the best department in the country. And you think about the few people that have actually had their hand in making that kind of change and affecting that kind of change and keeping the morale up, keeping us out of further litigation that we would be in, making sure we continue to hire the best and the brightest and to streamline the process for hiring. She did that. I'm proud to say that she's now going to go on to continue to be a Reserve LAPD officer, so we'll be the same rank now.
Yep. Yeah, that's true.
And no longer have to call you boss.
No.
I love you. You're amazing. We are a much better city because of you, and you've left a legacy of a mark that we should all be proud of.
Thank you so much.
No question.
Mitch, thank you very much. One of our colleagues, Mr. O'Farrell.
Actually, Mr. President, if I may, and Mr. Englander is right. Certainly Sandy Jo made the Reserve Corps much, much stronger, and she's making it even stronger still by joining it, so we're going to be delighted to work with you in that capacity. Before we go to members, Mr. President, if I may, we're joined by the City's Controller, Ron Galperin, and I'd like to give him the opportunity to say a few words as well.
Thank you.
Controller?
Good morning. We're here to celebrate the amazing career of one of LA's finest, a woman who has spearheaded major transformations within the LAPD and served with distinction for 30 years. She has held many, many positions within the department, from patrol to vice, to her final role as Assistant Chief in the Office of Administrative Services. And Sandy Jo has helped shape the department's community-oriented policing strategy. Now, in her current role, I've really gotten to know her on a variety of projects that we've done through the Controller's office, everything ranging from routine public records requests to the audit of LAPD's workers' compensation prevention practices, in which she provided incredible insight and was just so helpful to me personally, but to everybody in our office. But I think why everybody loves Sandy Jo is because of the person that she is and not just the work that she does. She's no-nonsense, she's the consummate professional, she's unbelievably responsive, but she does everything with an amazing amount of heart and with soul and with caring and with warmth. And if you want to know almost anything that you could possibly need to know about Sandy Jo, just look into her eyes at cadet graduation, and look at the emotion in her eyes, and I've seen this, and the pride and the love that you see in those eyes, and the dedication that she has to everybody in the City of Los Angeles, but particularly to everybody at LAPD. I'm really glad that we're still going to be seeing you as a reservist, but we are going to miss you, and among other things, by the way, I have to say, Sandy Jo is probably also the most huggable member of the LAPD. We love you.
Hold on, face. Sit down.
I'd like to ask our, our police chief to say a few words before we turn it over to the members, if we could.
Another of our huggable members.
Yes, we can. We're looking at you guys.
So Sandy Jo joined the Los Angeles Police Department in 1980. She worked some of the toughest divisions in the city. She was a fine police officer who I knew because we were police officers together in South Los Angeles. She rose through the ranks doing all the tough jobs at a time when women in our ranks were very rare. She broke every ceiling there was to break. She became a, an Assistant Chief, which, as all the councilmember knows, is the second-highest ranking position in the Los Angeles Police Department. Truly, truly remarkable accomplishment. She's been a Los Angeles police officer during the 1984 Olympics, during the Northridge earthquake, during the visit of the Pope, during the 1992 riots, during the crime, the crime-ravaged years of the mid-1990s. When I promoted her to Assistant Chief, when I became chief, she took on our budget during the worst recession of our lifetimes, and she kept the Los Angeles Police Department not only on budget, but helped this city survive the recession. She's done a remarkable job. Now, along the way, she met and married another Los Angeles police officer, Nick McArthur. Her son, Cody, is now a Los Angeles police officer. She loves this organization. She loves this city. And I think the way that I sum it up the best is that Sandy Jo has loved all of us, and the organization loved her back, and there is nothing that, that any of us can take from our careers that is better than that. Thank you, Sandy Jo.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Controller, members, Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I think with all of your work at McArthur Park, I'm going to start referring to Sandy Jo McArthur Park. It's going to stick with me. I just, I just want to rise and compliment you as well for your leadership within the LGBT community and you hosting those regular forums that I've had the great pleasure of attending and seeing you in action, and just the misunderstandings that, that you are bridging within that community. Very, very impressive, and you have a course, the LGBT Community Policing Course, which is remarkable, and I know that Tony Aronaga, my Communications Director, went through it, a nine-week course, and, you know, he might be ready to join you as a reserve officer someday. You never know. But really, just your work, and as evidenced by the support of your colleagues, I think you have such a deep respect and mad respect amongst your colleagues for your career in the police force, so I just want to rise and add my voice to compliment you on an incredible job well done, and wish you much continued success on your journey. You're still very young, and you have so much more to give and so much more life to live, so congratulations, and may God bless you and your family.
Thank you.
Mr. Corretts?
Well, I just wanted to commend you and recognize you for having done more than most people in the LAPD and in the city at large to have a positive impact on our community. And I really just wanted to ask, it's not too late, the ceremony's not over, can we talk you out of it? You won't have to be embarrassed, you can do it, though, so I wanted to make one last try, but thank you for all the amazing things that you've done for this city.
Thank you.
Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you. I too want to stand and recognize Chief McArthur for her commitment, dedication to our police department. Chief has, you know, joined the LAPD in 1196 with my class, and to be able to see you kind of rise through the ranks and oftentimes approaching you, I feared you, because you know what? You were solid, you demanded accountability, and at the same time, you were fair and consistent in how you treated your officers, and I respected that as a cop, and even more so how, how you embraced community-based policing. Just yesterday, we heard Mayor Garcetti's effort on creating this division of relationship-based policing, and I know you, you hinted to me that we need, you need our help, this council's help to make that division happen. We're going to miss you greatly. You embodied our core values, respect for others, reference for the law, quality through continuous improvement, and I just want to say thank you so much for leaving a legacy here in the City of Los Angeles, most importantly, within the Los Angeles Police Department. Congratulations. We're going to miss you.
Thank you.
And to our great chief who's retiring, it's, it's very good that you had put your fingerprints on many good things, and when I go up San Fernando Road and I am in Mr. O'Farrell's district, I see your fingerprints on a building that came out of the ground because of your creative sense, but also the brains of Charlie Beck to pick you. And what you said, chief, is that true, chief?
Didn't take a lot of thought, Tom.
You got it. You got it.
Thank you.
No, thank you, but that's so true. And I, and I also wanted to just put a shout-out from a friend of mine, Angie Dickinson, because Angie Dickinson was police woman, and more police women than I've met in Los Angeles saw the TV show Angie Dickinson as a role model for good, and I always mention her name. Now, you're clapping, so I'm going to call her and tell her you're happy, too. God bless you. Good job. That's what it's all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you, everybody, for all that you've done for me. I, I've said this a few times, I came here very young. I started when I was 12, for those of you who are trying to add 35-plus, but I did come here very young and very, very naive, and you, the city, this department, has raised me to be a much better person than I was when I came. So I thank you all for everything you've done for me personally. It's been very, very easy to love this city, and I, I hope I've done that, and I hope I helped to make this place a little bit better than the way I found it, because we need to reciprocate, and since you were so kind to pay me for 35 years, I'm going to give back some time now. I feel very committed to that. I'm joining a few of my friends as reserves, in sort of full circle, because Chief Beck was a reserve when he started, and it's a way for me to not just go cold turkey. I don't think I could. I love you guys all too much. Maybe not some of the challenging questions that I've received over the last five years, but even that has made me a much better person, because I have learned so much about what it takes to run a city and to run a department, and how a department has, each, all of our departments have to be very compassionate, because when you pull a string from one department, it pulls a string in another, and we are all interwoven together, and it is not just about the Police Department, or the Fire Department, or the Personnel Department, it's about all of us working together, and I hope that's what I was able to do with all of you the last five years, and thank you very much.
So Chief, Mr. Buscaino said that you reflect the core values of this department, and that's certainly true, but just as important, you've helped to create the core values of the new Los Angeles Police Department, and there's been very few people who've been a more positive voice and a more of, and a more positive face of the department than, than you. And so, on behalf of the entire City Council, we want to congratulate you on your years of service and wish you all the best in your retirement.
Thank you so much.
Let's step up. Let's step up here. Ron?
Chief Parks, if you could come up, because you're one of my other chiefs. Come on, come on.
Chief Parks is shy. Thank you very much. This time, I'd like to call on Mr. Blumenfeld for a very, very special presentation as well as Mr. Coretts. And I also want to thank the staff of all the offices for their assistance. Mr. Blumenfeld.
So today, members, we just, we had a bittersweet retirement, but we're going to pause now for a solemn moment. And today, Mr. President and members, we're going to honor the memory of more than 11 million people. It's Yom HaShoah. 11 million souls. 11 million people who lived and loved, but were ultimately murdered, not for crimes or misdeeds, but simply because of who they were. 6 million of those were Jews, more than two-thirds of all Jews in Europe at the time. For perspective, that's the equivalent of every Jewish man, woman, and child alive in America today. They were young, old, rich, poor, able-bodied and firm, scholars, musicians, doctors, lawyers, butchers, bakers, farmers. Over the course of only a few years, centuries of communities, vibrant and rich, in small towns and big cities, were simply obliterated. And each year, on Yom HaShoah, on the anniversary of the uprising in the Warsaw Ghetto, we remember. We remember to guard against future atrocities, to mourn more recent ones. We remember so that lives that were lost so senselessly would not be lost in vain. And we remember those whose lives were lost and we mourn the generation of lives that will never be. The honor and the legacy of those who survived. The men, the women, many of the children, many of them who were children, who suffered unspeakable horrors and found their way to light. While the memories of those who we lost remind us of humanity's terrifying capacity for evil, the survivors and their families, who are today are our neighbors, our friends, our family members, are the living embodiment of humanity's capacity for survival. And the survivors of the Holocaust, of the Armenian genocide, Cambodia, Rwanda, the ongoing massacre in Yazidi at the hands of ISIL, remind us that our charge to speak up in the face of injustice and suffering is still strong today. We need to pay heed to that. Today, though, there are still those who, for reasons of malice or greed, seek to deny recorded history, invent their own facts, or simply shirk responsibility. But, you know, there is some good news. In this last year that's passed, in fact, in the last four months, there's been a little bit of a victory. Perhaps the last of its kind in terms of Holocaust victims has been struck against one particular company. For 60 years, that company stood out for failing to take responsibility or full responsibility for their crimes during the Holocaust. Unlike other companies like Mercedes and Siemens that, that are major corporations and were complicit or much worse in the horrors of the Holocaust, the French railway, SNCF, for so many years refused to take full accountability for their role in the deportation of 76,000 French Jews to concentration camps. For 60 years, SNCF shirked responsibility, exploiting a technical status as an arm of the French government and allowing them to evade court actions in the United States and abroad. But this year, just four months ago, that company agreed to settle with the survivors and their families and establish a $60 million fund for reparations. Though way too long in coming, survivors and their families can take some small solace in this belated recognition. I take pride in having played some small role in helping make that happen. As a member of the California State Assembly, I authored legislation to force the hand of SNCF, who were then bidding to be the prime bidder on, on California's most lucrative contract with our high-speed rail. Put together a bill that said, no company can apply for California's contract unless they take accountability for what they did during the Holocaust. And the amazing thing is that that, that idea cascaded across the country and other state houses in Florida and New York and across the country picked that up and created momentum that created pressure that ultimately led to that historic settlement that we just saw. One of the survivors that's here with us today, Maurice Pollard, who you'll hear from in a little bit, is a survivor and among his family were three aunts and several unkers, uncles, who were shipped to their deaths by SNCF trains and whose behalf I and all of California should be proud that we helped secure some justice. Eli Wiesel once wrote, "Rejected by mankind, the condemned do not go so far as to reject it in turn. Their faith in history remains unshaken, and one may well wonder why. They do not despair. The proof: they persist in surviving not only to survive, but to testify. The victims elect to become witnesses." And that's what our survivors here today are doing. That's what the survivors and their families and the Shoa Project is all about, is about remembering. We're honored to be joined by several witnesses. We have Helen Friedman, who survived the Holocaust, and Maurice Pollard, who I, who I just talked about, who was another survivor. For Helen Maurice, for survivors, their liberators, for the families, for the 11 million souls that were lost, we remember. Now, next was going to be Paul Coretts and Mitch Englander, who are our co-presenters today, but because of time, we're going to jump to the consul general and then the rabbi because of time, and then we're going to hear from our co-presenters as well as some other speakers. So I'd like to, to next turn the microphone over to our great consul general from Israel who, who's been with before us before and really has been a partner on many things, David Siegel.
Thank you very much. Thank you. I want to thank the LA City Council for your dedication and commitment to the vital mission of education and remembrance in commemorating Yom HaShoah, the Holocaust Remembrance Day, on this, the 70th anniversary of the end of World War II and the liberation of the death camps in Auschwitz. I'm especially honored to recognize the survivors and their families that are among us today, Helen Friedman and Maurice Pollard. Each and every survivor continues to inspire us and empower us with your resilience, your strength, and dignity. Two-thirds of the Holocaust survivors made their home in Israel and were the pioneers that built the modern Jewish state of Israel. They focused not on revenge, but on rehabilitation, on rebuilding, on creatively reconstructing and commemorating to make the world a better place. But one-half of the Holocaust survivors that are still among us today are fearful that their stories will be forgotten. And Eli Wiesel, who was quoted before to use another quote, said that to forget the dead would be akin to killing them a second time. So that we, we solemnly swear never to forget and to stand tall as citizens of the world and proud Jews to fight discrimination, intolerance, and racism wherever it rears its head. We observe a central commandment in our tradition, in the Jewish tradition, to remember and never to forget. Remembering relates not only to the past, but to the way we live our lives in the present and in the future. It's a commitment to reaffirm our values and to stand up to injustice regardless of the enormity of evil in our own times. A famous rabbi, Jonathan Sacks, wrote that we are defined not by what happens to us, but how we choose to respond. We cannot bring the dead back, but we can keep their memory alive among us in our lives and in the lives of our children. So we stand here 70 years later, we say never again, we remember one-third of the Jewish people and many, many millions of others, 6 million Jews, including 1 and 1/2 million children who were killed in the Holocaust. We remember that the Holocaust began with words demonizing human beings, demonizing Jews, and ended in the gas chambers. We remember that Germany was one of the most advanced societies on earth at the time, yet that all too many in Europe and around the world remain silent. And today, just seven decades later, Jews in Europe again have to decide whether they live safely in their own countries, whether they can risk revealing their Jewish identity in public. The deliberate killing of Jews in Paris, in Brussels, in Toulouse, and lately in Copenhagen are clarion calls reminding us that words and marches and protests simply aren't enough. Words and remembrance without deeds are empty, they're hollow, and governments have to stand up to intolerance, to hate, to antisemitism, to condemn and act against Holocaust deniers and take on radical forces and endanger Jews and others in society at large. We know from hard experience that while it may begin with the Jews, it doesn't end there, it doesn't end with the Jews. Extremist regimes in the Middle East, chief among them Iran, unfortunately continue to deny the Holocaust, deny Israel's right to exist, call for its destruction, and seek the capabilities of mass murder. But the state of Israel, the one and only Jewish state, will forever safeguard and protect the Jewish people and in doing so, will continue to strive to be a beacon of light, the only democracy in the Middle East, working very closely with our American allies and friends to make the world a safer, healthier, and better place for all. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next, we're going to hear some words and a prayer from Rabbi Josh Aronson, who is the, the head rabbi at Temple Judea where I'm a member, and I'm, I'm pleased that he's made his way from the valley to be downtown with us today. Rabbi Aronson.
At this moment of remembrance, let us offer this prayer. Creator of all source and, creator of all source and shelter, grant a perfect rest under your tabernacle of peace to those who perished in the Holocaust. Our fathers and mothers, our sisters and brothers, our rabbis and teachers, our neighbors and children, the named and the unnamed, whose lives were cut off by brutal, vicious, cunning, and calculated violence, may they find peace in the world to come. Remember the survivors who have since passed away and the virtues of our people who've died at the hand of malice in every generation. We remember the works of their hands and the messages of their hearts. Bless the defenders of Israel with safety and strength and the righteous of all nations who provide protection, shelter, and comfort to the Jewish people. Let their deeds be a source of favor in heaven and healing on earth. Put an end to anger, hatred, and fear and lead us to a time when no one will suffer at the hand of another, speedily in our days. May the memories of all who have faced these horrors be sanctified with joy and with love. May their souls be bound up in the bond of everlasting life, a living blessing in our midst. Amen.
Thank you very much, Rabbi. Next, we're going to hear from colleague and co-presenter, Paul Coretts.
Well, today, we're called upon to remember, we choose to remember, the unbearable pain and costs of the Holocaust. In doing so, we honor and recall those whose lives were oppressed and taken, as well as those who were able to resist. We affirm the meaning and value of life itself, even when such lives are lived in the face of the grimmest imaginable tyranny. Like many of us here in the audience, and I, I thank everyone here in attendance, Yom HaShoah has a powerful meaning for me because of the family members whom I never met, who perished in the Holocaust. I speak of warm and caring human beings, like my father's beloved sister, whose tragic undoing was that she would not leave with him in late 1939. She would not leave because in a country where they had such a wonderful life and so many very dear non-Jewish friends, she simply was unable to believe that such a thing as hate and genocide then underway could really be taking place. My father's pain remained so raw that he never could speak about Kristallnacht and all the other terrible things that he had seen or the loss of his sister. He died without ever having that conversation with me. In fact, he never could speak his sister's name. So I only found that out just a few months ago when I was invited to visit the Mormon temple in my district and visit their genealogical archives. And I found that there, my, my aunt's name was Ladi Coretts, although that was her maiden name. She was married, so she became Ladi Vogel, and she had a couple children. And I suspect that made it difficult for her to leave the life that she had there. Those are the losses, the losses that so many of us feel, the shock of having past generations severed from us. That's why we feel so intimately and powerfully the importance of today's Remembrance Day. By taking this important time to memorialize and consecrate the unbelievable pain and catastrophic loss suffered during the Holocaust, we assert for all the world to know how much those lives mattered, and we acknowledge and celebrate the heroism and vitality of those people living their daily lives under these conditions. In this way, the conversations that were not able to happen before are now are able to occur, take place now and for all the time to come. So this is the time, our season of contemplation about ourselves and humanity concerning what has happened and what must never be allowed to happen again. This year also is the 100th anniversary of the Armenian genocide, the start of which was April 24th, 100 years ago. Around a million and a half Armenian lives were lost, and the struggle to get the horrors of the Armenian genocide to be fully acknowledged still shockingly continues. And that struggle mirrors our own sense of need and responsibility demonstrated today in regards to the Holocaust and showing fidelity to the past and commemorating, commemorating those who were lost. But whether we be Armenians or Jews or others who have suffered genocide, when we examine the past and we demand accountability, it is not just for our own sakes, but for all of humanity's. And we need to remember how Hitler gleefully cited the world's forgetfulness about the Armenian genocide when he said, "Who still talks nowadays about the extermination of the Armenians?" Hitler exploited the willful ignorance of the Europe of that era. And because we never want to have such tragedies occur, occur again, we have to highlight the truth of past genocides and try to inoculate the world from future horrors. So I want to thank everyone who has made this day possible and that effort, particularly our survivors, and let us never forget.
Thank you very much, Councilman Coretts. Next, we're going to hear from our co-co-presenter, Mitch Englander, and colleague.
Thank you very much. It's not just today of a day of remembrance. It's every day, and it's not just about those we lost or the survivors who will soon no longer be with us. It's also about the future generations and what they're going to learn and carry on from what happened. Four years ago, I had the opportunity to take my family to Israel. My youngest daughter was 11 years old. We were at Yad Vashem. And in and as you're leaving from that incredible experience of being there, there's a room near the exit, and the room you go into is filled with pictures all over the walls and the ceilings of all of those that perished. But then there's also computers set up, and you can type in your name, you can type in your last name, you can type in anybody's name, and it finds all the similarities of these folks of our family that we lost. And my daughter, 11 years old, sits down on one of the computers and starts typing in names. in names, and not just Englander, but she asked, "What are her grandparents' names? What were her great-great-grandparents' names?" And names started to come up on the screen. And she was so touched and so moved that she went home and said, "I'm going to teach myself Hebrew. I'm going to study on my own every tradition." 11 years old, and she did. And as she approached her bat mitzvah, she researched some more on her own, and she found a program called The Remembrance Project. And on that, you can find a little girl who was killed in one of the camps. A little girl, and you can find any information they may have on her. And my daughter found a nine-year-old girl who didn't survive. And she researched this little girl, and she said this little girl was not able to have a bat mitzvah. So my bat mitzvah project is I will have her stand with me at the Beima, and we will do this together. And she went on and took it a little further, and she did a lot of research. Now she's 12 years old, gearing up for her bat mitzvah, and on her own researched the family to find out if there's any survivors that made it out. And she found her sister, and we were shocked. A 12-year-old girl on a computer in her room finds a living relative, a sister. So my daughter went on from there and found that not only is she alive, she's living in Los Angeles. So we called her. We cold-called her, and my daughter was the one that dialed the phone, and when she answered, she explained who she was and what she was doing. At first, this woman, who was aging, had recently lost her husband, thought it was some kind of sick joke. She was shocked. She had just recently found an uncle living in Florida that had the only photo of her and her sister together, just recently. So she invited us over for dinner. So we drove over the hill, and we went to her home, where she ordered kosher pizza, and we sat down in her home and spent hours with her, learning about The Remembrance Project and her sister and their last days together, that her sister, who was two years younger than her, died in her arms right before they were freed. She gave us her only photo and asked that we clean it up, it was aged, that we restore it, bring it back to her, and use it for the bat mitzvah, which we invited her to as well. My daughter sat there at the Beima with a big picture blown up of this nine-year-old girl and had her bat mitzvah with her. That's what today's about. Today's about making sure that future generations continue to do the same, that we instill what happened in all of our children as well. USC Shoah Foundation actually has done just that, under the leadership of Steven Spielberg. And in fact, if you're not aware, they have 52,000 eyewitness testimonies, survivors. They have 109,687 hours of video of survivors, of family members, of stories. I encourage and urge everyone who hasn't had the opportunity to go there, to sit down, and to listen, to reach out to our young ones, field trips, organized classes, to go there and listen. I thank you so much for this opportunity to share the story of how this has touched my own personal life and my ancestors as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mitch. Next, we're going to hear from our wonderful city controller, who is also very personally connected, as he is the son of a survivor, Mr. Ron Galperin.
Good morning, Mr. President and council members. I'd like to begin by actually sharing the words of Martin Niemöller. He was a German Lutheran pastor and theologian who was born in Germany in 1892. Interestingly enough, he was an anti-communist and he was a supporter of Adolf Hitler in the very beginning. He quickly came to see the error of his ways, and he became the leader of a group of German clergymen who were opposed to Hitler, and he was arrested and he served time in two concentration camps. And here is what he said. First, they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was nobody left to speak for me. And this is why it is so important to fight discrimination, to fight antisemitism, to fight all forms of hatred when they begin to rear their ugly head. And that's the point of why we are all here today, to remember, but also to act on that remembrance. Yom HaShoah, as we refer to it, was actually inaugurated in 1953 by then Prime Minister of Israel, David Ben-Gurion. And the name of this commemoration, the full name of it is actually Yom Hazikaron La Shoah Ve La Gvurah, which means, Shoah means calamity or destruction, yom means day, and it means the day of remembrance of the destruction and of the heroism. And so we're here to remember not just the destruction, but also the heroism. Heroism both during the Holocaust, as well as heroism before of those who sought to stop it as it was beginning to raise its ugly head. As many of you know, my father is a survivor. He was from Romania. He was very fortunate to escape during the war. Needless to say, I wouldn't be here if he did not have that good fortune. And he journeyed through a number of countries, came to Israel at first, and then eventually to the United States to build a life for himself and for his family. We were really very fortunate. Many, of course, did not survive, and among those who did, many still have great needs, and we have to be aware of that and to remember them as well. It's interesting, the Senate Select Committee on Aging held a hearing recently on the health and social services and needs of Holocaust survivors. There are between 109,000 and 140,000 American Holocaust survivors still living, and a quarter are living below the poverty line. Many still also face significant mental and physical health challenges as a result of the Nazi atrocities. This is, by the way, in addition to the survivors, and it's, of course, a diminishing number each year in Israel, in the former Soviet Union, in Europe. And today is our day to remember not just what happened, but to remember them as well, and to be vigilant, vigilant for each type of hatred as it rears its head. There's, by the way, in the bridge just nearby here, for those who have not checked it out yet, a wonderful commemoration of the Armenian genocide, and something that everybody should be aware of. Because as it was mentioned, Adolf Hitler, when he began the Holocaust, talked about the Armenian genocide and how nobody remembered it, and what a tragedy that was. Now lest we think that it's all darkness, even with what's happening on campuses here today in the United States, even with what's happening in Europe, there are also good signs. It's interesting, there was a Jewish fraternity at Emory University that was vandalized with swastikas, and the chancellor of the university actually said, "We will not stand for this." And he asked everybody the very next day to come to campus dressed in blue, to say, "We are standing up against antisemitism, we're standing up against discrimination and against hatred." Nearly every single person on that campus showed up in blue. It was a sea of blue. What a wonderful, wonderful example to everybody. So we have to have the courage to remember and the courage to act, and I'm so grateful to live in a city in which we're able to have this kind of commemoration in the people's house. And thank you very much for allowing me to be a part of this.
Mr. Blumenfield, there's a couple of your colleagues who would want to say a few words, if that's okay?
That's fine. We have a number of speakers as well, so.
Mr. O'Farrell?
I'm going to be very, very brief, out of respect for Mr. Freeman, Mr. Polar, and Ms. Freeman. I just want to rise and say on this Yom HaShoah Day of remembrance that it's a great time to reflect on genocide anywhere, and the fact that entire populations, entire governments still deny, and as long as we still have denial of genocide and the Holocaust and crimes and atrocities against humanity, that only means that if we don't address it forcefully with events like this, that chances are it will rear its ugly head again. So I just want to thank you for bringing this presentation here today. As someone who descended from Native Americans, from a tribe that suffered forced relocation in the 1800s, I have a sense, a small sense, of what this is like, and so I stand in solidarity with all of you today, survivors everywhere, and those determined to make sure that this never happens again. So thank you so much for this incredibly important presentation, and I'm glad to support and lend my voice to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Catherine Schneider. We're very fortunate to have a vibrant Jewish community, and the Jewish Federation is really, is a leader in that community, and I want to bring up Catherine Schneider from the Jewish Federation. Catherine?
Thank you so much. I'd like to start by thanking you for giving us the opportunity to mark this occasion and for your leadership. As mentioned before, there are many survivors in Los Angeles, many of whom are unfortunately living below the poverty line. Our Federation is committed to caring for them in dignity. We also are committed to building a vibrant Jewish community in memory of those who perished. I also think, though, it's an important moment to stop and recommit ourselves to justice for everyone in our city. In Israel today, the siren sounds, and everyone stops, and they get out of their cars, and they just stand and remember. And all of us together can stand and remember the survivors, those who perished, but also commit ourselves to this city. We are honored, the Federation's honored, that there are many people in the room here today who are participants and are graduates of our New Leaders Project. The New Leaders Project, the goal of this civic engagement education program is to create members of the Jewish community who are committed to the past, who are committed to remembering, but also committed to the future of our city, and partnerships like this on this moment, and partnerships that benefit all of us. So thank you so much for giving us this opportunity.
Thank you, Catherine. Next, we're going to hear from Claire Firestone, who is the president of Second Generation. Ms. Firestone?
Thank you. I would like to call up the members of my Second Generation organization who are here today to join me behind the podium. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for attending today. My name is Clara Firestone. I am the daughter of two Holocaust survivors. My mother is a survivor of the insidious Nazi death camp Auschwitz, and my father, of blessed memory, was a survivor of a Hungarian forced labor camp before he was transported to Mauthausen concentration camp. I speak today in memory of my murdered grandparents, the aunt after whom I am named, and the hundreds of family members, of just my family alone, that perished. In 1978, a nascent Simon Wiesenthal Center, the precursor of our Museum of Tolerance, contacted my mother and asked if she would be willing to tell her story. She reluctantly agreed to break her 30-year silence, thus becoming their first outreach speaker. On occasion, I would accompany her and lend my support. On one of these excursions, while we were driving home, the dean of the center, Rabbi Cooper, and I simultaneously, after a lull in the conversation, uttered the same sentence, "I wonder what is going on with the Second Generation." A few days later, I was called to a meeting to his office and asked if I would be willing to help form an organization. In short, that's how I became the founder and president of Second Generation of Los Angeles, which was the first of the organizations in the United States dedicated to the needs of children of survivors. In our earliest days, in addition to public education programming, we held closed-door meetings for the children only. Here, our members found a forum to explore and compare their collective experiences of growing up in the shadow of history's most hideous crime against mankind, and a vessel in which to deposit their collective pain and begin to heal. In the process, we came to understand our collective identity and uniqueness forged through our daily backdrop of unspeakable horrors that our parents experienced. Who can understand what it means to be raised by traumatized parents, some of whom barely older than children themselves at the end of World War II? We became both parent and child to our parents. Who knows what physical challenges we experienced as a result of being born of mothers who had experienced severe starvation and physical abuse? And who can truly understand the emotional and psychological pain of being the first generation in history to be completely cut off from its ancestry and heritage, going through life missing and longing for family whom they never knew? Much the same as an amputee experiences phantom pain for that severed limb. Yet in spite of our pain, we went on to build successful lives, with a disproportionate number of us joining the healing arts. Many of us even became famous, people like CNN's Washington bureau chief Wolf Blitzer, 20th Century Fox's Sherry Lansing, The Fonz, Henry Winkler, and yes, even Jerry Springer. My mother often told me that when she was liberated from the camps, she believed that after the depravity that was the Holocaust, surely the world had learned its lesson and never again would or could there be another genocide. But she was quickly shown the error of her thoughts. This year marks the 70th anniversary of the end of the Holocaust, but this year we also commemorate the 100th year anniversary of the Armenian genocide, the 40th anniversary of the Cambodian Killing Fields, the 20th anniversary of Bosnia, the 21st anniversary of the Rwanda massacre, and Darfur and Syrian ethnic cleansing are happening as we speak. As the Jews were being slaughtered in the camps, they begged their fellow inmates, "If you survive, do not forget us. Tell the world what happened here." And that is exactly what the survivors did, building monuments and museums around the world to the Holocaust and reliving their pain over and over again by telling their stories. In the words of the Spanish philosopher George Santayana, "Those who do not remember the past are condemned to repeat it." Unable to escape the fact that it is five minutes to midnight in the lives of the survivors, the Second Generation has taken on the mantle of remembrance. But this is the duty of everyone, for the Holocaust was not a Jewish tragedy, it was the tragedy of humanity as a whole. And by remember, I do not mean just the passive act of recalling an event in one's mind, but the active remembrance of passing along the story and the lessons of the Holocaust to others throughout the generations. In May of 2010, then-state Assemblymember Blumenfield introduced a resolution declaring April of each year as Genocide Awareness and Prevention Month. Although we have had a state mandate of teaching the Holocaust since the 19- Although we have had a state mandate of teaching the Holocaust since the 1980s, sadly, as my mother and I go to speak at schools, we find out that that is not always the case. So I call upon the LAUSD, the second-largest school district in the United States, to ensure that the Holocaust is taught in every middle and high school. We know from experience that these survivor's stories, that hearing, I'm sorry, these survivor's stories is a transformative experience for children and creates more tolerant and compassionate individuals. In that regard, I also invite everyone to come and tour the Los Angeles Museum of the Holocaust, of which I am a board member. And I'd like to acknowledge Councilmember Tom Labonge for his assistance in helping us create that museum. California, and especially the melting pot that is Los Angeles, are the leaders of many cutting-edge things in our country. What better way to be a leader than intolerance and peace-building? I would like to thank Mayor Garcetti and the City Council for holding this commemoration and their public recognition of the Second Generation. I would especially like to thank City Councilmember Blumenfield for not only presenting me to State Assembly during the Holocaust commemoration in 2013, but for inviting me to speak today. Zohor, remember.
Thank you so much. A lot of very powerful speakers. Next, we're going to hear from Dean Schramm, who is the president of the American Jewish Committee and on the Los Angeles Executive Board, and many of you know him, he's a friend to most of us here. So Dean?
Members of the City Council, thank you for this commemoration of Yom HaShoaah, and thank you for allowing me to speak to you as the regional president of the American Jewish Committee Los Angeles. HAC was founded in 1906 by leaders of the American Jewish community in response to the murderous pogroms sweeping Tsarist Russia. It is ironic, if not fitting, that I now serve as the president of an HAC region in that my grandparents were survivors of those pogroms which caused them to flee to the safe haven of this great country. The animating feature of these pogroms was a virulent antisemitism that festered in various parts of the world over millennia where Jews settled after the destruction of the Second Temple in Jerusalem. It was this virulent antisemitism that Hitler embraced and exploited, which led and enabled him and thousands in the Nazi war machine to systematically murder six million Jews in the Holocaust. Out of the ashes of the Holocaust rose the State of Israel, the creation of which was formed by early Zionists in a movement that emanated in part from these same pogroms in the early 20th century that led to the creation of the American Jewish Committee. The mission of HAC is to safeguard the Jewish people by fighting antisemitism here and abroad, and by working toward the peace and security of the State of Israel, to ensure that Jews will never again fall victim to the bigotry and hatred of those seeking to destroy them. In my view, one of the best ways to commemorate Yom HaShoaah is to publicly recommit to fighting against this hatred in order to give meaning to the phrase "never again." Sadly, there is a rising tide of antisemitism in Europe, the likes of which we have not seen since the 1930s. HAC has offices in Paris, Brussels, and Berlin, where we work with the elected leaders, among others, to fight against this scourge. More worrisome, we are seeing now a rising tide of antisemitism in the United States, and especially on American college campuses. Antisemitism that is directly linked to the activities of the BDS, or Boycott, Divestment, and Sanctions Movement, which seeks to delegitimize the State of Israel and dehumanize those who support the right of Israel merely to exist as a Jewish state. HAC and I personally have been very involved in responding to recent antisemitic events, both at UCLA and UC Davis and elsewhere in the UC system, directed not only at Jewish students, but all students who support Israel's right to exist. This is very personal to me. As I see my son Thomas, who you all know, shockingly now almost 12, and getting ready to enter college in just a few years, like parents of college students now, I, and his mother, are concerned for his well-being as the Jewish college student that he will become in just a few short years. You, as elected officials, have an important role to play in speaking out against antisemitism, and I ask you today to use the power of your voice for that purpose. The founders of HAC and its leaders today recognize that the best way to fight against hatred and bigotry directed against the Jewish people is to fight against hatred and bigotry directed against any people. That is why HAC engaged in research noted in the Supreme Court's decision in Brown versus Board of Education as we stood against segregation in the 50s. That's why HAC led the effort in the creation of the Los Angeles Darfur Observance Day and was instrumental in the creation of the feature documentary film Darfur Now: Shining a Light on the Genocide in Darfur. And that is why, just in the last few weeks, HAC stood with Archbishop Derrarian and leaders of the Armenian community at the Armenian Cathedral commemorating the 100th anniversary of the Armenian genocide. Let us commemorate Yom HaShoaah today, not only by remembering the horrors of yesterday, but by standing together and recognizing that we must continue to fight against antisemitism and all forms of bigotry and hatred with vigilance and commitment. That you are holding this commemoration in this city hall is a reflection of that commitment, and I and we at HAC thank you for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Heard a lot of very powerful voices, but we have two more voices that are the most important voices to hear today, and that is of survivors. And so I'd like to first bring up Helen Freeman to say a few words. She herself is a survivor. Helen?
I'm Helen Freeman. For years, I couldn't bear to recount my own personal experience. But when hate has begun spreading, the lies and the night that the Holocaust ever happened, I know I could no longer remain silent. My story began September the 2nd, 1939, when the Germans occupied Poland. Memories, hope and faith make me want to survive, remembering what I left behind. I watch love once disappear. I try to remember love, but it's just not there. I try to forget the feeling of pain. I try to forget the taste of starvation. All I have is memories. That's my story. A tiny earring in the lining of a worn-out shoe was my connection to my family. The number on my left arm reminds me every day of the atrocities I have seen and survived. The reality of the war hit me when I turned 18, as fast and made as much impact as the German bomb which destroyed the house next to mine. It was 1939. The Germans were attacking the Polish city of Radom. "I don't want to stay here. Let's go away," I told my mother. Although the family went to friends' homes, there was no escape from the Nazis. The Germans did not waste time. They closed down local businesses, schools, and the pride people of beautiful apartments took away the furniture, radios, floor mats, and bicycles, and moved us to the ghetto, where ten families screamed into each apartment, not always a quick bit of bathroom. I kept asking my mother, "Why can't I go back to school?" My mother tried to calm me down, reminded me that Poland had been temporarily occupied by Germany and Russia before. This was not going to last long either. I guess my mother didn't expect what kind of plans the Germans had. The Germans had been lined to avoid mass panic. They told people they would be sent to the East to work for the army, while they actually sent them to death camps. During the random selection, I lost my 11-year-old younger brother and sister-in-law. My oldest brother was already married, so they took away his wife. We still believed at this point that family members were taken to work and would eventually see them again. The rest of the family stayed in the ghetto, where lives were filled with tension and The ghetto was surrounded with barbed wires, and going outside required a permit. All the Jews had to wear white armbands with a star of David. Their food supplies were running out. They tried to sell off whatever they could, including clothes and jewelry, to be able to buy some food from the Polish people who lived on the other side of the fence. Every day, Germans came to the ghetto to look for people to work and to humiliate them. One day, I was walking down the street in the ghetto. A German guard grabbed me and told me to go with him. I followed him, terrified. I didn't know what was going to happen to me. I was taken first to the outside of the camp and then to a war camp in Volanu, where I fixed German army uniforms and clothes. In the beginning, life was bearable under the circumstances until typhus broke out. The camp was closed, and all the women were quarantined. However, rather than receive medical attention, the woman had to run to the men's camp every day and back to prove they were healthy. Failure to pass the test meant immediate death. Then one of my roommates got sick. I helped her as much as I could and became infected as a result. To hide it from the Germans, I got dressed, with the help of my roommate, and sat behind a big table pretending to sew. I still found enough strength to go through the daily run, but energy was quickly diminishing. I got more sick, the fever got higher. I felt this was going to be the end of me, so I wrote a note to my family, not knowing where they were. I passed the note to a Jewish policeman who found my brother official. He planned my escape from the camp. Unfortunately, the plan did not work out, and we were caught and sent to police station, where we waited execution. While we waited for the final hour, a miracle happened. The German officer in charge was in a good mood and saved our lives. I was taken to a hospital where, with no medication, I eventually got my health back. Later, my brother helped me to regain strength. Throughout the time, we had to periodically hide in a attic from the Germans. We sat silently until we could hear the sound of soldiers' boots fading away. During one of those times, I met my boyfriend Joseph. After the liquidation of the ghetto, I was transferred to work at a weapon factory outside Radom. Later, I worked as a clerk at a German warehouse, where surrounded by atrocities. I encountered rare acts of kindness. I worked as a babysitter, helping the warehouse supervisor's wife raise the children. I even had dinner with the family. It was a surprise for a Jewish woman during the war. He was very nice, even though he was a Nazi. In 1944, when the men and women camp were closed down, I and other male and female prisoners were sent to a march to Tomaszew. During the eight-day march in the middle of July, the prisoners did not have enough food or water, and many of them died on the way. We stayed in Tomaszew for a night, while soldiers prepared a cattle train to transport us to Auschwitz. The next day, men and women were separated and cramped in Tomaszew. The cattle train. When they reached Auschwitz, the men remained on the train while the women were told to get out. We entered the camp through a gate with the slogan "Arbeit macht frei," "Work makes freedom." I thought that grass was kept, so beautiful, and orchestra was playing, and the Nazis had been so kind. The soldiers told the prisoner not to worry. They would take them to the showers and to get comfortable after this trip. I saw an aristocratic-looking man who pointed his finger, dividing us into two groups. Just by waving his finger, he decided who should live and who should die. The group on the right went to take a shower and never came out. When they entered the shower, the shower room's deadly gas came out instead of water. The group on the left, with whom I was sent, was told to remove their clothing and give up any personal belongings. The soldiers shaved some of the women's heads and took their shoes out and gave them wooden cloths instead. I did not have to give up mine because they did not have souls. The soldiers then tattooed the prisoners. From that moment, I became known as I-24490. While I was giving up all personal belongings, including pictures of my loved ones, I kept thinking of my family that I never said goodbye to. It was scary for me, so I hid away one earring. I pushed it into inside lining of my shoe. I was hoping they didn't notice. The earring was not worth a lot of money, but it was my connection with my family. The Germans took my shoes and put them in the water to make sure I was not hiding anything. Had they found anything, I would have been shot instantly. I was happy I did not come out. The earrings remained in the shoe. I kept the earring during the time at the camp, and whenever I felt depressed, hungry, or hopeless, I reminded myself of my family with this keepsake. I touched the shoe, and I felt a connection with my mother, and I just kept me going. The earring and the prayers to God, that was all I had. Life in Auschwitz was miserable. The prisoners slept on boards locked in the barrack. The food ration consisted of a thin slice of bread, liquid of coffee, and watery soup. The Germans did medical experiments on the prisoners, including male and female castration. I was in Auschwitz from July 1944 until November 1944. In November, I was moved to Czechoslovakia to work in the Siemens factory. On May 8, 1945, the Russian soldiers came to tell the prisoners the war was over. But after being lied to for so many years, it was hard to believe Americans had to confirm the Jews' freedom when they believed they were still being lied to. I returned to Radom to look for family. I wandered the street, confused. At that time, I saw a man. It was my boyfriend Joseph, who was looking for me. "I will never leave you," he said. We got married and immigrated to the United States, and we were together for 64 and a half years. My husband lost his entire family. I kept the earring for many years. After the war, when my daughters grew up, I took apart the little stones from it and put into rings and gave it to my children. I dedicated my life to making sure that the lessons learned from those atrocities are never forgotten. Even if we live in a world with suicide bombers in the Middle East and genocide in Darfur and Rwanda, we must band together and stand up against hate and injustice. I hope, after hearing about my experiences, it gives you strength and face difficulties to affirm life. May this bring hope into your life and God's love into your heart. No joy after liberation. We had lost our families and our homes. We had no place to go, nobody to hug, nobody who was waiting for us anywhere. We had been liberated from death and fear of death. We have to pledge to fight intolerance and prejudice and the suffering they cause. Now, I try to pass a legacy. We, the living survivors, entrust the legacy of the Shoaht U, the second and third generation, and thereafter to all generations. We want you to devolve that sacred memory of our suffering, and our martyrdom shall never erase. never erase, shall be erased. We want you to recall the heroism of Jewish resistance. Remember the shining examples of sacrifice and kindness from righteous Gentiles. Remember the racial prejudice and discrimination which led up to Holocaust. By not forgetting, you will pay tribute to those who were destroyed. By not forgetting, you will ensure for those who live and those who are yet to be born that we intend never to allow such insanity to happen again. This is the heritage we, the survivors, entrust to use custody by safekeeping all generation to call. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for sharing, for sharing your story. It's really... One more survivor today who is going to bear witness as well.
I'm ninety-three and a half.
She's ninety-three and a half years strong. So next, I'd like to bring Maurice Pollard to the microphone. Mr. Pollard.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, and my name is Maurice Pollard, and I am a survivor of the Holocaust. And being a survivor makes me a member of a quite endangered species. Before I go any further, I wish to thank Mr. Blumenfeld for his active voice in the reparation. The SNCF, the French Railroads, need to bring to the Holocaust survivors. Also, all my thanks to all of you present here to honor all of us who survived, and I do thank you very much from the bottom of my heart. Now, I was four years old when World War II broke out, and I would need to show you, if I can find a picture somewhere, right here. This is what I looked like at four years old. I was a happy little boy, just living and enjoying life. Four years later, I would be a walking skeleton because of a lack of food, lack of nutrients. And on top of that, there was the psychological warfare that the Germans had instituted. I'm going to bring a little humor now, because one evening around 1939, my father came home from work and asked my mother, "Eva, do you know how Adolf Hitler ties his shoes these days?" My mother, not wanting to ruin my father's story, my mother replied she didn't know how Hitler tied his shoes. So my father, with a smile in his eyes, simply said, "Adolf Hitler ties his shoes in little Nazis." So let's say I have a little humor, because what we are talking about is so sound. This being said, the four years that followed were far from being fun. When the Germans so easily bypassed the farce France called the ligne maginot, which was a line of defenses and bunkers, they thought they would fight the Germans with a sword and the cavalry as they did in 1914. But the Germans were smarter. They came with the pancers and the tanks and the airplanes, so they just bypassed that. The first aspect was naturally real war with aircraft and bombs. The second weapon was totally abstract and invisible. It was psychological. The Germans, the government instituted and proclaimed that all the Jews had to wear a yellow badge, a yellow star, which in Yiddish, we called the latte in our language, because it was a shame to wear that. And the German policy of forcing Jews to wear identifying badges was but one of many psychological tactics aimed at isolating and dehumanizing the Jews of Europe, directly marking them as being different, which means inferior, to everyone else. It allowed for the easier facilitation of their separation from society and subsequently put them in ghettos, which ultimately led to the deportation and murder of six million Jews as well. Those who failed or refused to wear the badge risked severe punishment, including death. For example, the Jewish Council, also called Judenreit, of the ghetto in Gwiazdostok, Poland, announced that the authorities have warned that severe punishment up to and including death by shooting what would be in store for those who refused to wear the badge. How did my parents and I survive the Holocaust? Because we were always one step ahead of the Gestapo. We were going from one town to the other, to the point that I personally couldn't go to school, and at the age of ten was totally illiterate, couldn't write, couldn't read, couldn't count. And that marked my entire life. I need to tell you a little anecdote. In 1942, the Jews, as I was saying before, had to wear the latte, the yellow star. And we were informed by the authorities to register at City Hall. And when you registered, you had your ID card stamped with a big fat "Jüdis," or "Jude." So my father, who was a law-abiding citizen, took me to City Hall and wanted to register. So he went to City Hall, and he was greeted by an elderly gentleman. And the gentleman asked him, "What are you here for?" And my father said, "I came to register because I am an Israelite." So the man sat down and looked at brochures and papers, and it took him a little while, and finally, he conceded. He said, "You know what? I do have something for the Jews. I don't have anything for what you call yourself, Israelite." So in a way, this saved our lives by someone's stupidity. Also, I think that all this was preordained, and I firmly believe in that, that we were meant to be saved. I want to come back to the psychological aspect of that, and it was very devastating. It was even more devastating than the physical war. It worked on your mind, and it was based on propaganda. It was a mixture of fear and anxiety, anxiety which the Germans called angst. And we were always wondering, would we be alive tomorrow? Would we be safe if we went for a walk? You could also be denounced to the Germans or sold out to the Germans for a few hundred francs. And that happened to us. My father was a tailor and had hired a Jewish man from North Africa. And one Friday morning, the man didn't come to work. And my mother was preparing shabbat with the chicken soup. And at 11 o'clock sharp, big bangs on the door opened up Gestapo. So two men in beige trench coat came in with the informant, my father's helper. And one of the Gestapo men asked my father, "Are you Joseph Pollard?" "Yes, I am." This man told us that you are Jewish, so "Pack, let's go, schnell, schnell." And when my father saw that informant, my father was a very meek, very quiet man, but he took, he grabbed a shovel and was going to punch the man out of his life. So the two Gestapo men were flabbergasted by my father's reaction, and the one in charge told the other man to take the informant out on the street, back into the car. And then my father played his trump card, and he said, "I dare you to find anything that will substantiate the fact that we are Jews." That was a big gamble, because we had all the prayer shawls, all the prayer books, and the Gestapo men was just simply, "We don't need to do that because you are a brave man. Jews go like cowards." We had many, we had several encounters with the Germans, and it scars your life, and it takes a long time to heal the scars that it leaves. And even to this day, if you were to come to my house, because of the lack of food I went through, if you were to come to my house, I am a semi-hold, I always need to have the feeling that I have food in the house. I could spend time and time and time to talk, to sum up what I wrote in a book, which also served as therapy. It's called "The Holocaust Seen Through the Eyes of a Little Boy." So it's available on Amazon, a little plug in passing. What else can I tell you? There is so much to be told. I told you about the, if you were picked up by the Gestapo, you were taken to the commandant room of the German police and questioned and tortured. Then you were sent to a temporary transit camp like Dronz near Paris. From Dronz, you were sent to Auschwitz, and on French railway trains, by the Europass in passing, you know, they give you a good deal. The journey was more than horrific. Imagine tens of people jammed in cattle cars with no sanitation. It was a long, arduous trip. People of all ages pressed like sardines in a can, no air, no seat. I personally was not on one of those trains, but my aunt Sabine was one of those convoys, and so were my three uncles and three aunts. Those never made it back, and we lost quite a few members in the family. When she was freed, my aunt shared with us the horrific journey. She told us of the stench, the straw on the floor car, and of people being sick and dying on the way there, little babies. What really takes the cake about SNCF, and I need to bring that up because this is something that's very important to me, what takes the cake, as we see in English, that the French railroad system or SNCF billed the German government for each detainee, the transporter to Auschwitz. And to me, I will always veto that bill, or at least I will agree to the bill if the SNCF lives up to its commitment and to its responsibility. Also, the lady just talked about Auschwitz and the sign over the door with the "Arbeit macht frei," which means that work will free you. What they meant was, they would work you to death, and then you were gone. Basically, that's all I have to say, because it's impossible to sum up the fear, the fright, the anxiety we lived through for about four years in ten minutes. So at this point, I would like to express my gratitude for having allowed me to share with you some of my memories. May God bless you, all of you, and protect you. And as we say in French, merci. Also, as we say in Hebrew, lechaim, to life, because of all of us are eternal. So thank you for having me, and lechaim.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. It's my pleasure. Thank you.
Very intense. Thank you. So lechaim, to life. Thank you so much for that. We have some certificates to recognize the fact that our survivors came with us to tell their stories. So I want to give one to you, Maurice, and Helen, if you'd come up to, we'll give you both a recognition, just as a token of appreciation for the fact that you've shared your story with us today. And it has been an intense experience to have this full Yom HaShoah presentation, and we really appreciate the fact that you were here and made it so special.
May I add to a little comment? About fifteen years ago, I was in, at the, about ten or fifteen years ago, I was at the Holocaust Museum in Paris, France. And I watched an elderly lady, also a survivor, and she really put me on my way of talking about the Holocaust. And she said, "If you have survived the Holocaust and do not talk about it and tell people what happened, you are not, you are not worth surviving. So you have to continue so that it never, ever happens again." Thank you very much. Lechaim.
For Claire and the organization, we'd like to give you this, which is to commemorate also from the full council for all the second-generation survivors and for the organization. So please accept this as a small token.
Thank you so much. This is so beautiful.
Thank you very much. And this concludes the presentation.
But before it concludes, Mr. Blumenfeld, what a tremendous job and an extreme discussion and remembrance. I'd like to ask us all to rise at this time, just for a moment, and remember the survivors of all violence from the Holocaust, the Armenian genocide. Just take a moment, and everyone in chambers, please rise for a moment. Thank you very, very much. And to our survivors, give them another big, big hand of welcome. Thank you. Mr. Blumenfeld, very important day.
It must seem so bizarre.
Mr. Clerk, at this time, Mr. Buscaino has item 28. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. Item 28, called Special Judge, Councilmember Buscaino.
And if we could move around that, we're good?
Thank you. She was a teenager, right? So she was... She was able to do so. Colleagues, this item before you addresses our hit-and-run epidemic and our ongoing efforts to address the hit-and-run crime issue in the city of Los Angeles. As you know, Mr. Engler and I have been working on a comprehensive approach, and this item before you is that ongoing effort, one, to offer standing reward motions, two, with Mr. Engler's effort with the Medina Alert, using social media and our media partners to get the word out on all these hit-and-run crimes that occur in the city of Los Angeles. And lastly, calling on our friends in Sacramento, the state legislature, to look at ways that we can alter our, the California vehicle code sections, specifically this yellow alert that Mr. Gatto has proposed in Sacramento. We know that's moving forward. At this time, I'd like to invite Damian Kebbit and also Representative, Los Angeles Police Department Lieutenant Ferry to come up to the center table. And welcome, then. As we know, Damian has been in the forefront of this issue. He has inspired all elected leaders up and down the state of California with this tragic accident that he suffered on a bike. Damian, as we know, I'll start with you. As elected leaders, we do everything we can on the legislative end to address issues that come before us. Obviously, the city of Los Angeles, 20,000, averaging 20,000 hit-and-run crimes in the city. I assume it incumbent upon ourselves to turn to folks like you, who have been victimized by a hit-and-run crime, and work with our community partners to help address this issue. Tell us a little bit about your story and how you became a victim of a hit-and-run crime.
My story starts in February of 2013, when I was bicycling in Griffith Park with my wife. I was hit by a light-colored minivan on the streets. What would have been a relatively minor collision, in other words, I would have gotten back up, dusted myself off, turned into literally a struggle for my life. So I started from the hood of his car and was dragged underneath the car for nearly a quarter of a mile from the streets of Griffith Park, down the on-ramp, and down the five freeway at close to 50 miles an hour. I survived, obviously, but I missed my right leg, broke 20 bones, shattered both my shoulders, nearly lost my left leg, and lost about 15 pounds in about two minutes, which is not a recommended way of losing weight. After four months in the hospital and realizing how bad the epidemic of hit-and-runs really is in the city of Los Angeles, not just in the city of Los Angeles, in many cities across the country, many major cities, I realized that, you know, I'm alive and I need to do something about this. This is something that affects too many people today. 7,500 people in the county of Los Angeles are sent to the hospital or killed every year. Those numbers are just gross. And to be able to do something to change that epidemic and to make, to change Los Angeles from being known as the hit-and-run capital of the US to being the forefront of leading the way of... of leading the way of really turning this into the Vision Zero capital is really where we're going with all of this.
So obviously, you've taken on a huge effort with your organization now called Finish the Ride. Tell us a little about what you're doing to raise ongoing, just raise awareness of hit-and-run crimes in the city and throughout the region.
Finish the Ride is a growing coalition. In fact, many of our members are beside me to the right over there, mothers and fathers, men and women who have been either victims themselves personally or have lost loved ones due to hit-and-runs. And we work both with the city of Los Angeles, with LAPD, with LA Department of Transportation, but also work on a grassroots level, whether it's billboards that we ourselves have put up or our next, awareness-raising events, such as the next one we have coming up this Sunday on April 19th, where we have people from all around the city, actually from across the western U.S. are showing up and raising their support of street safety by taking part in activities on the streets of Los Angeles, bicycle riding, running. It's a celebration of health and the prosperity of being in a great city by showing how it should be.
We love you, Damian. I can't tell you how you continue to inspire us with your story and also others who have joined you. Thank you for really partnering with Damian to share your stories as well. Our ultimate goal is to change the driver apathy here in the city of Los Angeles, change that culture, and shame these drivers who continue to flee at a scene of an accident. Again, as we know, it's an accident. Till you flee the scene of an accident, then it becomes a crime. Colleagues, as you know, just recently in Mr. Price's district, this last week, we had another hit-and-run crime. Luckily, folks came together and caught the driver. Unfortunately, very similar to your story, Damian, the victim of this hit-and-run crime lost a leg as well. I want to fold in, as we all know, hit-and-run crimes have impacted all of our districts from every corner of the city. I want to bring in Lieutenant Ferry, who has helped lead the effort as one of our partners in this collaboration in addressing hit-and-run crimes in the city. Tell us a little about, just give us an overview of this new standing reward program for hit-and-runs crimes in the city.
Absolutely. The program would offer a standing reward of a minimum of $1,000 for property damage, $5,000 for injuries other than permanent or serious bodily injuries, $25,000 for a permanent, serious bodily injury, and $50,000 for a fatal hit-and-run collision. It'd give our department the opportunity to be able to reach out immediately at these crime scenes, at newsworthy crime scenes, to reach out to the public and implore them to come forward and offer them a monetary reward if they do so.
And give us, once approved, I'm assuming we're going to get unanimous support here, give us an idea of the LAPD's effort in relaying the information and educating the community that this reward, standing reward, is live and is in effect.
Yes, Councilman. Our press relations sections are ready for press releases and conferences. We've got a strong social media machine, our LAPD online, LAPD online blog. In fact, we've set up Facebook and Twitter accounts dedicated solely to this rewards program, and they are ready to go, ready to be activated upon approval. We've been working with Crime Stoppers to air a special episode highlighting this hit-and-run program. Reached out to community-based organizations, our Bicycle Coalition, WAC LA, Street LA Blog, and our Department of Sanitation has agreed to sport signage on their sanitation trucks, not only regarding the reward program, but an educational signage as well, just saying, "Hey, don't make an accident a crime. Don't leave." And lastly, I think the biggest impact will be the training of our detectives, sergeants and lieutenants on scene at newsworthy events, just to be able to say right there, right then, "Hey, please come forward."
And let me be clear, as I said over and over, working with our media partners on this, we have the best and brightest traffic investigators in this country. And they need the adequate tools to seek justice for these families who have lost loved ones, to seek justice for those who have been involved with property crime as well. And if we give our officers the adequate tools to move forward and close these cases and this reward, we hope we'll do just that. You know, colleagues, our goal in creating this standing reward program before you is to end the culture of driver apathy in the city of Los Angeles, where motorists continue to display a lack of responsibility and concern, in some cases, leaving a human to die for in our streets. In order to do a better job and to deter people from immediately leaving an incident, we need to engage the public and increase the number of witnesses to come forward, as well as change the state law to make the consequences more serious for hit-and-runs. Our intention is not just to increase the number of these crimes that we solve, but to change the mindset of these drivers and shame these drivers who flee the incident of these hit-and-runs. The cost on our criminal justice system from investigating, prosecuting, and responding to these incidents is far more expensive than implementing this standing reward system, which we currently do for illegal dumping and graffiti. I want to call, this is real, I want Damian to come forward and show us what his, the suspect driver did to his leg, and this individual is still out there. And today, we are more connected than ever with the use of technology. And we hope with this motion before you, Damian, you can show us how Damian continues to inspire us. And this Sunday, this event Sunday, we hope everyone joins us. Give us the address again, where we're kicking this off?
This Sunday, April 19th, starting at 7:30 in the morning.
Yes. Give us the details for the event on Sunday.
This Sunday, April 19th, starting at 7:30 in the morning at 48:10 sunset, we'll be having thousands of people there. You councilmen, Councilman Labange, Councilman O'Farrell, we're expecting the general manager of LADOT. We're expecting a lot of people there who are supporting the idea of safe streets, the idea that hit-and-runs are not an acceptable part of this city, the idea that this shouldn't be the hit-and-run capital of the U.S., but the Vision Zero capital of the U.S. And that's where we're taking all of this.
Thank you, Damian. Thank you, Lieutenant, and to your entire team. Again, an i-vote today will send a message to these idiot drivers who continue to flee the scene and let them know that they are being watched, that with social media, with Facebook, with Instagram, with Twitter, we will get the information out and you will be caught. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. -- thank you, Mr. Buscagino. Mr. Englander?
Great. Thank you. And I want to rise and thank Joe Buscagino for this reward motion. As the Chair of Public Safety and both being reserve officers as well, we've actually partnered on this issue and worked very, very closely together. In fact, we've done a lot, but it's never enough, and we need the public's help. The fact that we used to label hit-and-runs as an accident in the city of Los Angeles, hit-and-runs being an accident, and we've relabeled that now and classified it and put it into CompStat so we can measure it as a crime. It's a crime. And in fact, it's one of the most cowardly crimes you can commit when you hit a human being with your vehicle and you leave them on the side of the road to die like a wounded animal. You're a coward. You're a criminal, and we're going to come after you. Together with this council, we've done a lot already. And as was mentioned, we're going to be utilizing social media, Facebook, Twitter, Nixel. We also partnered recently with billboard companies, where they're going to put up free public service announcements in all of our communities, letting people know, "If you see something, say something." What we're asking people to do is first, stop and render aid. Try to get as many details as you possibly can, as much information, year, make, model, license plate, direction, the vehicle is traveling in. Do not chase the vehicle. Help the victim. Call 911. Call an ambulance. If that's not enough, as Joe has brought forward, we pay a standing reward motion. Think about this. We have a standing reward motion policy in the city of Los Angeles if you dump a sofa on the side of the road. But we don't have one, until now, if you hit a human being and leave them on the side of the road to die. Today, we will. And I thank you for that. And I urge your i-vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Englander. Mr. Labange?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I'd like to thank Councilman Buscagino and Englander for the work that they've been doing on this issue. It is exceptionally good work and smart and overdue policy. Many of you may remember that little over a year ago, I stood at that dais with Judge Pragerson and his wife, whose son David had been killed in a hit-and-run accident during the holidays of 2013 in Pacific Palisades. We posted a $50,000 reward, which matched a $50,000 reward offered by that family. As a result of those rewards and as a result of extensive and nonstop coverage from the Palisadian Post, they finally apprehended the killers, they were tried, and they were sentenced about a month ago. So rewards do work, and a standing reward will do great work. But I also want to thank Damian for mentioning Vision Zero. For those of you who aren't familiar with it, Vision Zero is a philosophy and a program that was established in Sweden in the late 90s and has been successful in a number of other cities. And its goal is to eliminate traffic fatalities, period. Not just hit-and-runs, traffic fatalities, period. It says Vision Zero because one traffic fatality is one too many. It is the cornerstone of our transportation philosophy in Los Angeles now. When Selita Reynolds came into DOT, she published a strategic plan called Great Streets for Los Angeles, and Vision Zero is a centerpiece of it. And what it means is we think differently about transportation and about law enforcement and about planning. So every time we look at a street and we assess whether or not to widen it, the primary metric is, does that enhance safety or impede safety? When we target traffic enforcement, our first metric is, what impact will this have or not have on traffic fatalities? It's a very smart way of going about things, and I'm very glad that Ms. Reynolds has led with that, and I'm very glad, Damian, that you mentioned it. It's very important that we make sure that we eliminate all traffic fatalities in Los Angeles so people can live, work, and play in their own neighborhoods. Thank you.
Mr. Price?
Thank you, Madam President. I too want to stand in support of this motion and appreciate the leadership of Councilman Buscagino and others who've been built-strong advocates. And we all have been touched by this senseless wave of criminal activity. Some reference was made to an incident that occurred in my district where the victim, citizens came to the aid of the victim. More troubling was an event that occurred almost a month ago, almost two months ago, where an 85-year-old woman, coming home from church in the middle of the day, gets hit. I mean, and the driver hit her, turned around and came back and then fled. You know, just senseless. She's recovering, thank goodness, recuperating. But we've got to do more to prevent accidents from becoming criminal activities. People got to stop, they got to report it. If you see it, you got to report it. And I think that this measure will go a long way to encouraging greater citizen involvement and participation in this process, and so I stand in support. Thank you.
Seeing no other members on the queue, Mr. Clerk, let's take up a vote. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Mr. Clerk, I'd like to take up item 37 quickly. Mr. Blumenfeld?
Yes. On item 37, I'm going to recuse myself on that item, as one of the pieces in that item is funding in the Discovery Cube, and my spouse is employed by the Discovery Cube, so I recuse myself from item 37.
Very well noted. Seeing no members on the queue. Seeing no other members on the queue. Mr. Clerk, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Mr. Labange for presentation.
Thank you very much. This has been a very important morning with all these very special presentations, but we did not want this day to pass as we get to look forward to the Special Olympics, which will come here this July. And joining me is Elga Sharp, we all know, our Chief of Protocol Emeritus, if I will, and all the work that you've done. She is the Chief of Protocol and a Vice President of International Relations for the Special Olympic Games. We honor the language services. The very special services for those are the interpreters. And I'd like to ask that our very own interpreter come out and join, because I want to honor you as well, because it's so important that we communicate to the world as the world comes to Los Angeles. The Special Olympic Games, the Summer Games, will be held July 25th, starting here at the Memorial Coliseum, to conclude on August 2nd. The Games will be the 14 Special Olympic Games, which was the birth child, if I say that right, of Mrs. Shriver, whose idea was that no one should not be included. And this has just opened it up to the world, and there's nobody like the Special Olympic athletes that we have here. This marks the first World Games held in the United States in 16 years. The last time, it was in 1999 in Raleigh, North Carolina. When I was at a recent UCLA event and I met all these fine interpreters, I said, "They should get recognition, because to communicate is the key." And all their work, this is like track practice, this is what Jackie Robinson would go into before. He got out of the blocks and won every race he was in. He got down and he got it done. And that's what's so key, as I use a metaphor to these next group that I'm going to honor in a minute, the Jackie Robinson Day. But I wanted to salute the Special Olympics. I want to ask Elga Sharp to say a few words, and then I got to do the roll call of these great honorees.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Labange, distinguished members of the City Council. It's always a pleasure and an honor to be here again. We would like to extend a special thank you to Mayor Garcetti, who gave us a nice block yesterday during the State of the City address. And we are looking forward to the upcoming Games. We have up to 177 countries participating, 7,000 athletes, 3,000 coaches from 177 countries. But most of all, we will be covering 71 languages. Speaking of languages, we have all these interpreters here, and we will have over 2,000 language volunteers who will be helping us out. Thank you once again to the city of Los Angeles for this remarkable support. And today, I would like to especially thank Councilmember Labange for his ongoing support and cheering on the Special Olympics, and this will be great for the city of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elga. Thank you so much. I want Esther Hamida, who is the Chief of All Language Services. Thank you.
Well, I thank you for that. Thank you very much. I am humbled and honored by this recognition. On behalf of all my colleagues that are here and that are not here because they have other commitments, we'd like to thank the City Council and especially Councilman Labange for this recognition. It is indeed an honor to be an interpreter during the Special Olympics, because we will be helping people that will be coming to Los Angeles from all over the world. This is important, because we're bringing to the forefront the need of acceptance and inclusion. That means that Los Angeles will be offering world-class interpreters for the world to see. And for that, thank you so much for this recognition. Interpreters are found in this chamber, as well as the courtrooms, community meetings, they're all over the place, serving the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And Alisa? Okay, Alisa Estrada, I want to give you a commendation first off, but ask you to give us a greeting in your interpretive tongue.
Es un honor y muchisimas gracias.
Very good. All right, Alisa, very good there. Esther, you're coming right up again here in your native.
Muchisimas gracias. Es un placer estar presente con ustedes y especialmente recibir este honor de parte de esta gran ciudad. Gracias.
And also Martilla? Marticia Palmer. Maritza Palmer.
Merci bien. J'ai appris mon français. J'ai fait mon cours alimentaire comme petit enfant. Et gracias infinita. Sono cresciuta anche Roma. And we thank you so much. I grew up abroad as an expatriate American. There are many of us. We thank you.
Well, we, we, and especially to the French for our greatest gift, which is the Statue of Liberty, which welcomes all people to the United States. We, we. Nancy Gilmore. Thank you, Nancy.
Allora tante grazie. Mi dispiace che il sindaco, signor Garcetti. Cetti ecco un buon nome italiano. Grazie tante. Yes, Mr. Garcetti, it's too bad he's not here.
You can say it to Mr. Ferraro. He's up in heaven.
Ah, signor Ferraro anche.
Thank you so much. Yes, Sue Gillian. I want to say it correctly.
Julian Sue.
Julian Sue. How do you do?
Very well, thank you. Tom Labange议员，thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And that was native of?
Mandarin.
Mandarin, Taiwan. Very good. Catherine Xu. Okay, she, she.
Yes.
Okay, good job, okay.
今天很荣幸到这里来接受这个奖，it's a great honor to be here. Thank you so much. 谢谢.
Thank you. Naveen Crisman?
Naveen.
Naveen, sorry, Naveen. Thank you, Naveen.
谢谢您，我们感到荣幸能够在这里，thank you so much.
Thank you. A native too?
Arabic.
Arabic, very good. Here you go, right there, right here.
Thank you.
Very good, right there. Jacqueline? Yes, I want to say it correctly.
Jacqueline Akbin.
Jacqueline Akbin. Thank you.
Thank you. 谢谢您，我们感到荣幸为您提供特殊服务，在特别奥运会上，thank you, we are so honored. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Yeah, yeah, okay.
And I'll say it in my mother tongue touch, damas en here, hielo heartak bedang, was saying, oh, send the tongue part to your own soul, Phil Stone. And in Papimento, where I was born and raised, macha macha danke, nos to macha contento mes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I want us all to join right here, if we could, right here. I want to say Habangahumaga. Okay, that's Tagali, okay. Hanyoseo, that's Korean. Kumpumkop, that's Thai. And Adios, thank you, Council, very much there. Let's give our interpreters for the Special Olympic Games a big hand.
And we're going to miss Tom Labange, who's given such great service to this city.
Well, thank you very much. Merci, merci. But now, I'm going to just swing in here. There's an A and a B side, like a 45 record. And we're going to the A side with the B side right there because it's Jackie Robinson Day in the city of Los Angeles. A big hand right here, family. Come on up here, everybody, right now. Want to have Kathy come up right now? And I want to tell you, members, we have a lot of special people that are here as we celebrate tonight. There's a big game up there in Allegiant Park, and it all kind of had a little start right here. And if I could have Duke Russell get over on this side, Chip, come up here, everybody that's here. Over 14 years ago or 13 years ago, Duke, 2002, whatever that is, 2002, 2002, how do you do? Duke Russell, Hollywood High graduate, Ms. Martinez, baseball player for the Dodgers, single A, didn't make it to the triple A, but single A, it was very good, he made the pros. He played for the Santa Barbara Dodgers. He had a lifelong affection for the Dodgers, but even a greater affection for the great Jackie Robinson, who, as we all know, grew up in Pasadena, went to Pasadena High School, a Bulldog then, was a Lancer for the Pasadena JCC City College, then went to UCLA, was a great Bruin. And then, as you all know, the rest is history, as he made his way up to the majors from the Montreal Dodgers to the Brooklyn Dodgers. And so he broke the color line and made a big difference in all of our lives and continued to. But this young man right here, Duke Russell, who lives in Hollywood on Lucerne, called his councilman and said, "I want a Jackie Robinson Day." So we started Jackie Robinson Day. And now, as it's grown, it's grown just from this podium right here to where throughout the major leagues, from San Diego to Boston, from Miami all the way to Seattle. And the games that are played today, every player in Major League Baseball wears the great Jackie Robinson number 42 right on the backs, right here. Turn it around so everybody can see it on camera, Kathy, which is so good. First, I want to give a big hand and a shout out to Duke Russell right now because he brought it forth. One little request from one of our, give our calligraphers a big hand. Thank you very much, Betsy. There's one Dodger fan who loves Duke back there. Duke Russell, give him a big hand. Just say a word real quick.
Thank you, everyone. Jackie Robinson was fabulous, you know. We've moved to San Diego, and Jackie Robinson Day at the City Council must continue. Mayor Han declared, gave a proclamation that we would have it every year. So Mayor Han deserves a lot of credit, obviously. You played a key role in 2002, Tom. Let's keep it going. There was no Major League Baseball celebrations until you spoke. On this podium. I would like the Council to ask Congress to honor Jackie Robinson every year. President Obama was certainly like that. Thank you.
Tell Avok to write a motion. Say that. Avok, write a motion.
Avok, write a motion.
Don't hide there, Avok. Write a motion. Kathy Robinson, Kathy, get up here for the families. Give a big hand for you.
Hi, good morning, President, Council President, and Council members, hi. My name is Kathy Robinson Young, and I'm here joined with my family, my mom, family cousin, and my daughter Brittany. And this has been a very special day, April 15th, for the family. Aunt Rachel, she founded the Jackie Robinson Foundation back in 1973 and has attributed to the successful graduation rate for the scholars that have received scholarships throughout the Jackie Robinson Foundation. And today, yes, April 15th, Major League Baseball across the country, you will see baseball players wearing Uncle Jackie's retired number 42. That number can no longer be used or as a new member coming into the Major League Baseball to be chosen to wear it. It's been retired. And that happened in 1997 during Uncle Jackie's 50th anniversary. So we're just very proud of the tradition that Aunt Rachel set forth through the Jackie Robinson Foundation, and we are very pleased that you allowed us to come before you this morning, today. My daughter Brittany would like to have a, well, she does have a special presentation for Bernard Parks. And she also has a presentation for Mr. Tom Labange. If you could also please come forward. We understand that you're retiring in June, and we would like... I'm just going to come around and help Brittany. This is Brittany, and this is for Bernard Parks, these two books. The larger book, written by Aunt Rachel, I assisted her with that, and the book on top from my cousin Sharon, and it's autographed to you, Bernard Parks. Thank you so much for all your contributions here to the great city of Los Angeles, and we appreciate everything. Mr. Tom Labange, my mom will do the same honors and present to you the same books, and they are also autographed to you, Tom, from Aunt Rachel. She autographed them, and my cousin Sharon. And this is her book here, and we appreciate all the great work and to remember the Jackie Robinson Day, LA, and to continue in the memory of Uncle Jackie. I remember, you know, playing in his home as we visited Aunt Rachel and Uncle Jackie when we were kids, when my parents, my mom, and my dad, who was Jackie's older brother, Mac Robinson. So I just want to mention, I always mention in memory of my dad. So we really, really appreciate you allowing us to spend some time this morning, this day, Jackie Robinson Day, in our family, Uncle Jackie Day. Thank you so much.
Words to say, I'm not going to keep you. Good morning, good afternoon, Mr. and Ms. President and Council members. I'm Mrs. Mac Robinson, the widow of Mac. I was just listening to the ladies and gentlemen speaking about Nazi and Germany and speaking about Hitler. Well, I can tell you this for sure. My husband, Mac, was on the 1936 Olympic team with Jesse Owens in Germany. And after Jesse won three gold medals, so it was a 200-meter race, was coming to the podium, the winners, of course, Jesse had three gold already. So the fourth was going to be the 200 meters, so he got that. Mr. Hitler was sitting in his box with his security people. And Hitler, you know, he didn't like us colored people and Jews. I may as well put it to you plainly. So then, when they called Jesse gold medal, number of, gold medal for, are United States? Oh, no. And the United States are over here. This is an Aryan race. This is not for all, but for that type, but not for the United States to participate in the Olympics at that time. At that time, I was only three years old. So Mac has been gone now 15 years. But what I want to really quickly say that, when the second-place winner was announced and it happens to be Mac Robinson, the second-place silver medalist, if I'd known today was this beautiful presentation with the Nazi-speaking, the gentlemen that have survived the Holocaust, I would have brought his silver medal. But I really didn't know that much was going on here today. But I do want to say to you that when Mac's name was called, Mr. Hitler got up and walked out of the stadium. He couldn't stand the pressure of another American and an Afro-American American winner at that time. Jesse barely won the 200 meters. My husband was right on his heel, if you look at the film in the near future. And also, not going to keep you, the jacket that I have on...
Jacket right here is.
Is really Jackie's.
Jackie Robinson jacket, right here. Real history.
That warm-up jacket.
Good job. And what a story for the Robinson family, how we're so proud of Pasadena, how we're so proud of Mr. Parks for his service and all of it. But Mac Robinson, because Jackie, you know, was, did what he did, but Mac Robinson was a saint too in what he did, which is so important that we never forget this day. We thank Duke for bringing it here. And to repeat what Don Newcombe told me, that years ago, Dr. King came to Los Angeles and he met with Roy Campanella, Don Newcombe, and Jackie at their home. And Dr. King looked to those baseball players and said, "You had it much tougher than I ever had it." That was Dr. King talking about how tough it was in baseball for the racist attitude that some had as it related to the breaking of the color line. But I'm so glad that Jackie Robinson came along, and I only wish he went to Marshall High School in Los Angeles, and we would have won the city title. Okay, one more quick quote.
One more quick one. Please see the movie 42.
42, good job, okay.
I was given a pen, it's very small, but please see that movie because it's very educational, and it is worth the time and effort to see what humiliation that Jackie endured during the time. Mr. Ricky said when he signed him into baseball, he wants him to keep his tongue in his mouth and turn the cheek the other way. And that is exactly what he did that opened the doors where the gentleman, at least colored, our people are able to get these contracts that are being signed and the amount of monies that they are making today.
Well, that's very good.
I want to thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Jackie Robinson. Listen to this, Jackie Robinson, number 42 in the program, number one in our hearts. Let's hear it, Jackie Robinson Day. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Mr. Clerk, can we move on to item number one?
Item number one called Special for Cards.
Mr. John Walsh. Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or JWalshConfidential tweeting at HollywoodDims. And once again, we're here for protest, appeals to the Building and Safety Department report again, you know. I'm not one of those guys saying you're all a bunch of crooks, I'm a white guy. No, no, when you do a good job, I tell you to do a good job. And as a renter here since 1976 and a resident since 1966, you do a very good job on these liens. Some of these liens are wrong, but you may notice people get up here, they question their liens, they're brought over, they're told to come back two weeks later. If they're not satisfied, they never come back because if you come down here and question the lien, they will knock some of the lien off. So what we said, if you have a lien on your property, always come here and you will be taken care of by Mr. Herman, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Next speaker, Mr. Herman.
All you residents of Los Angeles, as you see, we have many empty seats in Council today. But in regards to the lien, if you come here, you can get a receipt, and that receipt will excuse this lien that will be held on your property. Otherwise, you keep coming back, contesting the bullshit of the lien. And I hate to digress on such negativity, but again, the liens are predatory, insulting, and as you've heard many of your constituents complain, I object to the lien, and Department of Building and Safety, Mr. Charles, to my left here, knows damn well that we are against all liens. Send out certified letter by mail to the individuals that you're taking the action against. And more so, Mr. City Attorney, do your damn job and look up the information before you put a lien on someone's parcel and property, especially in Van Nuys. I hold my time to one minute.
Mr. Juan Alcala?
As you know, my questioning is, why in the hell do you have so many homeless people in this city? It's because of this, this type of behavior in the part of City Hall. You drive people homeless. They cannot pay your bullshit. They cannot handle your bullshit. You know, look at this. $656 lien to this little lady that can barely manage. And if you don't pay it, your little tweet, we're going to sell your house from under you. A lien to a little old guy that's lived in there for like 200 years, for lien for $1,506 just because the city saw a piece of gum in the front of his front door, you know? It was an offense against the city cleanliness, never mind that your sidewalks are full of shit, dog shit. A lien for $6,515 to this poor sucker that had enough money to buy a house, now we're going to take the house away from you and drive you homeless. You are a homeless-making institution, and you are all guilty. Look at you, Bonning.
Mr. Alcala, I'm going to remind you, stay on the subject, please.
What's your name? Anyway. Anyway, I don't even wanna know. Uh, you're all guilty of harassing the people that pay your damn salaries. You are guilty. And you know what? If there was a hell...
Thank you, Mr. Alcala. Mr. Clerk, let's take up item one for a vote, as recommended, with the exception of G, which is being reduced. The amount to 397?
Correct. Item G is reduced to $397.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Mr. Clerk, item fourteen?
Item fourteen called Special for Cards.
Mr. Walsh?
John Walsh at J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Number fourteen, this is a vacation of an alley. What happens is, say I want a piece of the city's property. Okay, I go and make a huge contribution to that city councilman's office holder fund, say about five, 10, $15,000, as much as I want. And then I say, "I want a piece of the property that you own to complete my property so I can build something on there." It's called a vacation. And there's very little, L-shaped alley, and Wilshire Boulevard, you know what Wilshire Boulevard property is worth? On the open market, this piece of property would be worth hundreds of thousands of dollars. Yet, what are we doing? We're essentially giving this property away. Why? Corruption. HollywoodHighlands.org. If not, say not.
Next speaker, Mr. Alcala.
Please hold my time to one minute, because a vacation, uh, as Mr. Walsh says, means giving away property, but, uh, property is pretty damn hard to get in this corrupt city. You can't even get a place to sleep.
Madam President, he's not talking about this matter.
Mr. Alcala?
Vacation, like, you're giving, uh, this person a little bit of property, right? Because they requested it, right? And, uh, you should give a vacation to the homeless because you harass them every night. You know how many complaints I get from homeless people saying the police just woke me up?
Mr. Alcala, for the second time, reminder, please stay on the subject.
Hold my time, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Alcala. Mr. Clerk, let's take up item fourteen for a vote. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
Mr. Clerk, let's take up item fifteen.
Item fifteen called Special for Cards.
Mr. Walsh?
J. Walsh Confidential, minute, uh, three. This is the dumbest of it all, as far as wasting money. This is, we have a rabbit problem in this city. We have rogue rabbits running around without microchips. So we're now gonna start a program, which will cost probably several hundred thousand dollars a year, it doesn't say now, so that we can put microchips in rabbits for electronic animal identification. In fact, what a lot of people do when they get these free rabbits from the city, these rogue rabbits, is eat them. That's what they do to these rabbits, and it's not illegal to kill a rabbit and eat it. But, uh, and this would be cost $15. So if you want your rabbit to have a microchip, your pet rabbit, the city's gonna pick up about $150 of it, and all you'll have to pay for the microchip is $15. Ridiculous.
Next speaker, Mr. Eric Previn.
Thank you, President Martinez. It is Eric Previn, uh, from Council District Two, in connection with this animal control at the city level issue. And I just want to make a small correction, that in fact, it's $56 to adopt a rabbit, and then it is an additional 15 now, going up to 71 if I have it correct, in order to have that rabbit chipped. And that will be at your expense if you choose to adopt a rabbit. And obviously, this does seem a teeny bit silly, because first of all, is there a large community of rabbits is a compelling and, I think, important question. And I think that the folks in the public should know that this came forward, in fact, by the Rabbit Lobby, a group of, not rabbits, but of people who care a great deal about rabbits. And there was, in fact, believe it or not, as Mr. O'Connell will confirm, there was a lawsuit, and the city was forced to bend itself into this position. So, um, obviously, I love rabbits, I think all of us do, they're very cute. And, but we also live in Los Angeles, and as O'Farrell and Parks, all of us know, that if a rabbit is to escape from its domicile in some way, there is a very strong chance that that rabbit will be swiftly dealt with by the coyotes in many of these neighborhoods. And obviously, a chip in that situation is gonna be, it's gonna need to be activated very, very quickly in order to stop that horrifying turn of events. So with this one, what can I say? I can only say that, let's unite behind the animal control folks who obviously didn't choose this themselves. Now, there is one small possibility that this could be conceived as an additional revenue play down here at the city of Los Angeles. You know, we've heard in the paper recently about, you know, for example, the pedestrians, they're tagging pedestrians like crazy, and they've got the lien program that the other guys have talked about regularly. And actually, the parking enforcement, Mayor Garcetti finally made good and sort of is relaxing all of that. So I would just say on this one, uh, let's not start a lawsuit, and let's just comply with this, and thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. Herman.
Madam Chair, I'd like to remind the City Attorney that he's in violation of the Brown Act when you are conducting the business of the people here, not the City Attorney. Violation of the Brown Act on record for you, Mr. Eric Garcetti. Now let me go on to the report of the rabbit scandal here. We're talking about $15 cost for mandatory electronic? Please give me a frickin' break. There are so many homeless animals on the street today that even Paul Coretts, Mr. (mimicking a pig) should put microchips on pigs then. Because the bottom line is, every animal has a right to live free in this world as we Native Americans do. So I'm gonna hold my time to one minute, Mr. City Attorney, as you turn your back on the public. And again, to remind you that Daniel Gus in Van Nuys has always said, "Stop putting Coretts' family on the animal service board." Bye.
Mr. Alcala?
Uh, the only question I have, what are you gonna do about Playboy bunnies? Are you gonna chip them too?
Mr. Alcala, you need to stick to the subject?
Yeah, the rabbits, um, I don't think you should chip any rabbits. Leave the damn rabbits alone, you know? What do they do to you? They're lovable. I love them, especially when they're deep-fried. I mean, they are delicious. Anyways, uh, I love all those cute animals, but we have to eat them in order to survive, you know? It's the food chain. So, uh, what if I eat one of those damn chips? Should I dip them in salsa, or what? I don't know what to do. One minute only. Please, hold my tongue.
Okay, item fifteen, we're ready to vote on that, Mr. Clerk. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen eyes.
And Madam President, there's been a request to continue item fifty to this next Tuesday, April 21.
Very well, thank you. Next item, item forty-seven.
Item forty-seven called Special for Cards.
Mr. Barajas?
All right. During general public comment, I will be bringing up this water crisis issue, but pertaining to what's on this agenda, um, relative to the feasibility of using reclaimed water in the Los Angeles freeway irrigation system. Now, the thing is, is that I have to say that even though I like short-term ideas, long-term speaking, this won't work. You'll still need water. And, well, I'll just leave it at that.
Next speaker, Mr. Alcala. Then we're ready to vote on this item, item forty-seven. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Mr. Clerk, there's been a request that item twenty-six be forthwith.
Very good.
Okay, next item, item forty-six.
Item forty-six called Special for Cards.
Mr. Barajas?
Same thing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh at J. Walsh Confidential tweeting at Hollywood Dems. This is a, another bizarre, bizarre motion. Technical feasibility and the cost to provide recycled water to potential customers in Griffith Park. Okay, well, I must say, this time, for the first time, they're not testing it out on a minority area. I must say, at least they're testing it out on white people, middle-class white people. I have no idea what recycled water is. Now, you can be crooks all you want, it's not gonna kill me, okay? But if I have to rely on your recycled water with piss and shit in it, because you made a mistake, then I'm gonna be poisoned. I, but it'll give somebody a job, it'll be a nice big fat study, no recycled piss and shit water for anybody, even the upper-middle-class white people.
Next speaker, Mr. Herman.
Madam Speaker, as I must communicate with the public, in Griffith Park, a unique cost to provide recycled water, and as HollywoodHighland dot John Walsh pointed out, the shit water that we have to drink and pollute our souls with is horrible. And I'm gonna bring out what Mr. LaRouge has brought out. The state of California is currently strangled by the incompetent policymakers you politicians have created by water infrastructure and water resources. Is this one of your actions? No one likes to drink contaminated water? So why don't you drink the first cup of water while I stand there and see for myself in Griffith Park? Because I love the animals in Griffith Park. I don't wanna see not one damn animal die from recycled water, let alone humanity die from recycled water. Had you not thrown all the recycled water out of Echo Park Reservoir, maybe we could all drink clean water. So Madam Speaker, as you heard, the file on March 10, 2015, the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power report relative to the technical feasibility and cost to provide recycled water, again, Tom Labange loves it, because he's going to DWP as a PR. And I'm still on topic, because I'm talking about the issue of climate change, yet denies the scientific facts of severe droughts, floods, which have ravaged the state of California since long before human science and industry became the factor. Got my shit together, huh? But not in recycled water. So I hold my last six seconds to you, Madam Speaker, and to the City Attorney. Do your job.
Mr. Alcala?
Well, I guess, in other parts of the world, people have to recycle their own, um, I think some of them have to drink their own pee. But in this advanced society, you have not provided for, you know, projects that would have plenty of water, conservation, plenty of dams, plenty of, uh, so, you know, it's very, very short-sighted to, um, to have to drink your own pee. And, uh, you could've done a much better job by providing, uh... ... retention, you know, water retention. When you get old, you cannot retain your water.
He's not talking about this item anymore.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, let's get ready to vote on item forty-seven.
Six.
Open the, I'm sorry, forty-six. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, we're gonna do item, Mr. City Attorney, item thirty-five.
Yes, Ms. President. As a reminder to the council members, this is a fair hearing matter requiring the council members heighten attention to the speaker at the podium or to their monitors at their desks.
Okay, if I could have Andy Liu, I think this is Yvonne. Guzman, and I think Lisa Green, please come forward. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Andy Liu, I'm the project's architect, and I represent the applicants in this case. This is a planning case. It's a project that follows every zoning and building ordinance that the city has, and it has been approved at every level of city planning. It's a well-designed project, a two-lot subdivision in a multi-dwelling zone, and it's a project that we've presented an extraordinary number of times to the neighborhood council, and which we completely redesigned to accommodate the various concerns expressed at the council and at city hearings. So after an exhaustive hearing, during which issues like mass scale and character were discussed at length, the West LA Area Planning Commission voted unanimously, and specifically, to uphold both the coastal development permit and the parcel map for the project. Councilman Bonin's motion seeks only to revise that part of the APC ruling, which mistakenly required the project to have a zoning adjustment. Both the planning staff, the zoning administrator's office, and the city attorney have stated for the record that the project does not require an adjustment, and that the APC ruling is in error. I urge you to follow the lead of Councilman Bonin, the representative for the project's district, and pass the motion to correct the planning commission's ruling. Allowing the APC ruling to stand, uncorrected, would turn a blind eye toward the city zoning rules. It would fly in the face of findings and recommendations made by the city's own agencies and planning bodies. Worse, voting against the motion to correct the ruling would send a message to the community that rules and facts simply don't matter in the planning process. I've distributed a packet to the council with specifics of the project, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So who do we have next? If you'd come forward and identify yourself.
Good afternoon, council. My name's Yvonne Guzman, I'm representative for my father, Sarah Finn Guzman, and my family, who had a heart attack behind this very painful process that they've been through. I'm here today to request that you deny the 245 motion before you, as a decision was made on February 4th, and the next five regular business meetings ended on the 17th, and therefore, February, and therefore doesn't meet the 245 test. Further, the applicant waived their right to challenge the adjustment requirements and capitulated to it. There were many issues with the project that were not determined by their merits and require the project to go back... the project to go back to the process and be reviewed in its entirety. The West LA Area Planning Commission spent over four hours on the project. The decision was made with the intention of denying the project in its entirety. My family has been harmed by the applicant due to the misrepresentation of facts on the FHA application resulted in defrauding the federal government. The property has never been owner-occupied per the investors, it is purely for speculation. Material facts in the building application further have denied due process to the existing tenants. A member of the public has brought evidence of irregularities on other projects by the applicant. The plans have never been provided to the public, nor were they available on ZMS at the planning counter or for the fire chief, nor were they mailed to the adjacent property owners. The MND speaks to the cumulative effect, the mitigative measures are inappropriate and fall short of the need for a full EIR. The result, SLOs, small lot subdivisions are having, the Venice Coastal Zone are not meeting the purpose of creating more fee simple homeownership that is affordable. The end result of small lot subdivisions in Venice are sales prices on average of 1.6 and upward of 4 million. The median price for Los Angeles, 600. The project is not consistent with Chapter Three of the California Coastal Act, the nineteen seventy-six coastal guidelines, the Venice Coastal Zone Specific Plan, Venice Land Use Plan, City of Los Angeles General Plan, Mallow, and others.
Thank you, thank you. So if I could have Ms. Green, Lisa Green, and a Sue Kaplan, and is it a Robin Rudisil, if you would please?
Lisa Green, Venice. Good day, council. I'm opposed to the motion by Bonin's office because of issues related to due process. I'm opposed to development for profit's sake and recognition's sake under the label of affordable housing, exclusive of nature's impact. Profit above people and planet is not the way, the truth, and the light. Cash isn't king, love is king. Right relationship with earth matters. Therefore, development is real and valid only if it improves the quality of life for all peoples in all respects, as to the need to be happy, to live a long and healthy life, the right to an education, access to adequate food, water, shelter, and the resources needed for a decent standard of living, political freedom, freedom from violence, guaranteed human rights by definition. Earth matters, love and peace.
Thank you, and if I could have next, it'd be Ms. Kaplan and Robin Rudisil, and if I could have, I can't make out the next name, Sheila, the last name is like a Sheila something or other, I'll let you come up and tell me your name. So Ms. Kaplan, go right ahead.
My name is Sue Kaplan. I am the chair of the Venice Neighborhood Council's Ad hoc Committee on Mass Scale and Character, but I'm here representing only myself. There's so much at issue here, and I don't have the time, so I'm just going to say I agree with what the appellant said and what's going to come after me. But Mr. Bonin has likely set an unfortunate precedent here. A developer did not like the result of a hearing and appeals to his councilmen. Unfortunately, that councilman did not go back to the community, to the neighborhood, and ask for their input, thus facilitating a good solution to this. He comes and unfortunately draws attention to and accuses the planning commission of erring. They did no such thing, they acted on instructions of the deputy city attorney. We think the planning commission should have a chance to rehear this, make the correct findings, which might not be any different than they are now, but that we would, but everybody will be involved in a good, healthy process. The applicant has had more time to present doubtful evidence about his project, and we have not had time to correct them. But his insistence that this meets the mass scale and character regulations of the Venice Specific Plan is dubious at best. His project has a lot ratio of eighty-one percent against the average for the block of thirty percent, and his insistence that the appellant's family homes in any way are comparable to his project is outlandish. Even with their height of twenty-seven feet, which would have been in the VSP's build, his project is forty-five percent and fifty-five percent larger than these houses built before the VSP was launched. And I'm just going to leave you with this, I think you do all understand what, how important it is for neighbors, because just last month, you voted for the, please let me finish this.
No, thank you. If I give you more time, I have to give it to everybody else. So thank you very much. So if I could have Robin, please come forward. Robert, please come, Robin, please come forward. I can't give you more time without giving others more time.
Good afternoon, President.
Please pronounce your name and welcome.
Yes, I'm Robin Rudisil. I'm here today as an individual citizen, not representing any neighborhood councillor group, and I want to ask you to please heed the Los Angeles General Plan and the Venice Specific Plan and the State Coastal Act as you listen to my points here. First of all, there have been numerous due process violations with respect to this project, and if I was your lawyer, I would advise you to send it back and have the area planning commission do it over and do it right. Also, I want to call your attention to the mass of this project. I distributed this schedule to all of you here a couple hours ago, and the data here and the resultant statistics show that the proposed project is 2.7 times, almost three times more massive than the average mass of the homes in the surrounding area. And as you know, according to these general plans and specific plans and Coast Select, that is not acceptable, and the project should not be approved as proposed. And if you vote to approve the project, it would violate all that you are here to represent. Imagine a long block, both sides with one huge structure near the middle, almost three times more massive than the others. This is unacceptable and clearly harmful to this neighborhood and to the adjacent neighbors, including the appellant. I also submitted a document in response to one of the applicant submissions to you that was information related to the proposed sister project at 664 Sunset. Same applicant representative, also a small lot subdivision. And I'm very disturbed about information in that report, and in fact, we found innumerable irregularities with respect to this project, including falsified documents provided to the California Coastal Commission and to the public. We are fighting erroneous plans and many other documents. So I ask you to please investigate these documents and these irregularities coming from the applicant's representative and the city area planning commission. We're very concerned about this project, 758 Sunset, and in fact, what appear to be other erroneous information. So please send this project back to the area planning commission and have this done properly with plans, et cetera, due process. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So sir, if I could have you come forward, and after you, I think it's Carmelo Iglesias and Leah Renee. Yes, sir, please identify yourself.
My name is Sudaj Shahin, and I live in Venice. I've been a resident there for over twenty years, and I support this project. I think it's a handsome building, and I think it's a huge improvement to the neighborhood and to the street, and I do not believe that it's overscaled. And I also believe that the proposed development has followed all the rules that were specified, and I think you just have a lot of people that do not want changes. Once again, this is a kind of a worn-out part of the neighborhood, it has to be upgraded. And I think this is a proper and correct project to achieve that end. Thank you.
Thank you. So do I have Carmelo, followed by Leah Renee, followed by David Ewing? Please come line up. Go ahead.
Thank you, council members. My name is Carmelo Iglesias, and I want to speak in favor of the project. I think it's, to reiterate the words of Mr. Liu, it's a well-designed project that fits into the neighborhood and provides much-needed housing to Venice. I think I'll ask you to help as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, and identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Leah Renee. Dear Mayor Garcetti, I have handed the council thirty-five copies of the California Coastal Plan, which findings state on page seventy-seven, I marked for you page three, that Venice is a special coastal neighborhood requiring protection. Contrary to Councilmember Mike Bonin, CD eleven's regular erroneous statement that there is no city local coastal program, it is critical to correct the misleading statements for the benefit of the public interest, property owners, residents, and visitors to the city's coastal zone, because there is a city Los Angeles Local Coastal Program, LCP, pursuant to California Public Resource Code 30600B and City Ordinance Number 151603. The accurate statement is, the city of Los Angeles has an LCP, although it has not yet been certified in full by the Coastal Commission. A city attorney, Ms. Amy Brothers, verified to the California Supreme Court, the Steve Los Angeles exercised its option to implement their coastal program in nineteen seventy-eight. The state Coastal Commission approved the city's program as of November twenty-seventh, nineteen seventy-eight. The city's local coastal program, Work Program, was approved by the Coastal Commission about June nineteen seventy-nine, and the city adjudicated the city's LCP in the Court of Appeals in two thousand and ten and the Supreme Court in two thousand and twelve, who each held that the city's program was valid pursuant to California 30600B. The Coastal Act mandates due process, proper notice, and fair hearings. No one can give up their rights without knowing what their rights are first. Your area planning commission in a recorded hearing said that they were very concerned that the complaining people were deprived of due process and constitutional rights. As you all know, I have two and a half years, I'm not able to work because you refuse to allow me due process. Please, send this back and have the applicants follow procedures. Thank you, I'd like to go back to work. Thanks very much, have a great day.
Thank you. So if I could have Mr. Ewing, and still, I've got the initial for the first name is S, last name is S, says it's a real estate broker, I just can't read this last name. So please come forward. Yes, sir.
Good morning, council members. My name is David Ewing, I'm a longtime Venice resident and homeowner. I believe you correctly asserted jurisdiction over this case on the basis of an error in the APC's planning. The question now is what your disposition of it should be. I respectfully request that you send it back to the commission for rehearing, and let me tell you why. Councilmember Bonin, two forty-five, this, due to an error of law, a technical mistake that was made by the planning department, not by the commission. Perhaps the commission should have caught this, but they were acting under the guidance of the deputy city attorney, who was present and had every opportunity to advise them. She did not. However, after the conclusion of the hearing, and in consultation with the developer's representative, the planner and the deputy city attorney determined that the planner had erred in requiring a lot adjustment. No one put that determination in writing. I confirmed this with the deputy city attorney. So there's an irony here, and it's one to which the Venice community is extremely sensitive, and that is, essentially, the planning commission is getting punished for what the planning department and the city attorney did wrong. And the city attorney and the planner's names are nowhere on this determination, there are no fingerprints there. So the West Area Planning Commissioner has a particularly difficult job in Venice because the Venice Specific Plan and Land Use Plan requires them to exercise judgment in areas for which there are no metrics to guide them. So they're constantly under fire by both sides on project after project. If you rule on this case yourself, which you'll be doing on the same basis that they made their decision, unless you know the Venice Specific Plan, the Land Use Plan, you're depending on your staff. So you send a clear message of no confidence in the planning commission, because you have it in your power to do the right thing, take the appropriate action, which is to send it back to the adjudic-
Thank you, sir. If I could get the next gentleman, followed by Mr. Herman. Please identify yourself.
My name is Suminda Sellehawa. I am for the proposal on 758 Sunset. There is a huge shortage of homes in Los Angeles. I have seen the elevations and dimensions of this project. I have driven by the neighborhood many times, and project fits the neighborhood in every which way you can think of. The project itself is a very thoughtful, nice, and exceptional design that everyone can be proud of. We need more of these projects, and we need to revitalize our cities and be proud of where we live. Moreover, we should recognize these projects as very important to our city so that we can create new housing at an affordable price. The city got it right by creating RD 1.5 zoning, recognizing the need for more housing, and this is one way to create housing. I have seen many similar projects in similar-sized lots approved and built in Venice. It was the right thing then, and it is the right thing now. The property next door to this proposed structure is larger in size, yet very same people comes here and oppose for no reason. So just like Mr. Bonin got it right, I hope others will too. On another note, Coastal Commission have approved the project too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. We have one minute left.
Absolutely. Send this plan back. Due process, due process, and not the arrogance of the ignorance of this council shoe here. More so, sorry to say, Mr. Bonin, that you're unable to follow a matrix of a due process plan, which provides everyone in Venice equal access to some sort of housing, sustainable housing, affordable housing, and the issue regarding this West Los Angeles Area Planning Commission, who I find contempt towards the public's interests, along with all you councilmen, as Mr. Krikorian says, they're thinking about it, the budget man of LA. But I'm saying again, this plan must stop, this plan must stay, this plan must stop, and go back to the planning board so that the people here who are opposing to it can be heard, and those in Venice each.
Thank you, thank you very much. Mr. Clerk.
Mr. President, in regards to this matter, I'd just like to remind the body that a communication from the chair of the Planning and Land Use Management Committee has been circulated and is before council for its consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin.
To this matter today, this is, as was indicated, a two forty-five matter. This is the first two forty-five I have done since joining the council. It is a tool that I think should be used rarely and extremely judiciously. In this case, I felt it met my own strict requirements for doing that.
Mike.
Mike. There we go. In this matter, which is a residential development in Venice, the West LA Area Planning Commission considered four different issues. A tentative parcel map, a coastal development permit, a Mallow Act determination, and the zoning administrator's adjustment. The commission approved the parcel map. The commission approved the coastal development permit. The commission approved the Mallow Act determination. The commission denied the adjustment. Since the commission acted, planning department and city attorney have determined that the request for an adjustment was not required and never should have been asked for the applicant, asked of the applicant, and he should not have been advised to seek it. Therefore, the APC's action regarding the adjustment needs to be reconsidered. It's important to note, not only does this project meet all of the requirements that the APC was advised properly to consider, but in the course of work with the community on this, the developer did a number of things which they were not required to do by law. When this project started, they were given, by code, the ability to do three lots at the request of the neighbors, they reduced it to two lots. They had the ability to build to a maximum building height of thirty feet at the request of the community, they went to twenty-five feet. They had the ability to go to three stories at the request of the community, they went to two stories. They had the ability to have a setback of ten feet at the request of the community, they went for a setback of fifteen feet. As far as I'm concerned, this is a technical matter, correcting an error that was made by the planning department, and city attorney did not properly advise the West LA APC, and this corrects that matter. I would ask for an aye vote in favor of the recommendation of Plumb Committee yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonin. Members, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, well, now quickly move to item thirty-four, held for cards. Cody, is there Cody? Penn Cell or Pennwell? Please come forward. And Svetlana? Please come forward. Yes, sir.
Hi, sorry. My name is Cody.
One second.
Of course.
This is another reminder that this is a fair hearing matter requiring the heightened attention by the council members to the speaker at the podium or to their monitors at their desks.
Sir, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Cody Pennwell. I am an alternate member of the Los Angeles County Democratic Party in the Assembly District Forty-Six and a member of the Council District Four. I live in Stone Canyon, the canyon in question. I am speaking to you today on behalf of the numerous residents who- I am speaking to you today on behalf of the numerous residents who spoke yesterday but were unable to attend today. I have a petition of over 20 residents who live on and are directly affected by this haul route. These names are not on the 70 names contacted by the developer, and of these 70 names contacted by the developer of the haul route, only two actually live on the route. So we have 20 that actually live on the route and are very unpleased with what's going on. The developer has grossly underestimated the true amount of excavation, and has spread the amount of soil over a multitude of projects and permits that are associated with this property. This piecemeal approach, I feel, is in direct conflict with the California Environmental Quality Act. This land and the surrounding parks has been deemed unstable by the Los Angeles Bureau of Engineers, and corroborated by a multitude of independent geological surveys, giving the land a rating of F on a scale of A to F. Sorry. It is because of these deficiencies and the inadequacies of this mitigated negative declaration that I asked the council to reject this MND, and to evaluate the project based on accurate numbers and geological studies provided by-
Thank you, sir. Please come and identify yourself.
Hello, my name is Svetlana Molchanov. I'm owner of the property on 3925 Hopewell. And I owned this piece of land for about eight years, finally I come to the time to wanted to build something, and I hire professionals. It's not like third party. I have city engineers, I had architects, geological report. Everything was done accordingly to the highest standards. And we've been approved, our haul route was approved at the Department Building in Safety, and now I understand inconvenience of all neighbors. I can just assure that I'm gonna look myself, to do everything is possible in order to make it as easy, but please let me go ahead with construction. If this project is gonna be stopped, I probably have to go bankruptcy. I'm dealing with this already for two years, bank, engineers, and everybody. So, please let me do it.
Thank you. Okay, let's just prepare to... Mr. Labange?
Unfortunately, in this situation is, the planning department is still gonna be able to deal with all issues related to the housing. This has just been approved, so I ask that you vote no on this. The community will have a great opportunity to weigh in on all other issues related to the development. Just a no vote.
And-
Correct, Jonathan?
No to deny the appeal.
No, no to deny the appeal.
Mr. President, if I may, in regards to this matter, a communication from the Chair of the Planning and Land Use Management Committee has been circulated and is now before council.
Hold on a second. City Attorney, I apologize, Mr.-
Let's prepare. Mr. Labange, you requesting a no vote?
Hold on. Mr. City Attorney has been right on the money in explaining exactly what happens. So, good. Move the communication of the planning-
Now, you know what I wanna do, I'm gonna take up item 51.
We can move the communication.
Are we sure?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Move the communication.
So we are voting in support of...
Yeah, I apologize.
Mr. City Attorney, you may wanna clarify this. So we're voting in support of the committees? Mr. Clerk, somebody?
Mr. President, yes, your vote would be on the recommendations of the Planning and Land Use Management Committee.
Which would be an I vote, correct?
Correct.
Okay, let us-
I stand corrected, thank you, Mr. City-
Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you.
Okay, now, Mr. Clerk, it's my understanding we need to go into a special meeting?
Yes, sir, would you like to recess the regular and go into the special? Very good. Blumenthal, Bonnabuz, Gino, Sidhu, Englander, Fuentes, Huizar, Cretz, Krikorian, Labange, Martinez, Ferro, Parks, Price, Wesson, ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President. That brings us to item 51. It's an item for which a public hearing has not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, that item is now before us. All right, so we're gonna do, in this one, Mr. Englander, we're gonna do one minute, we're down to a bare quorum. So, I have some public comment cards, I'm gonna call them first, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Barajas, and Mr. Previn, please come forward now.
At HollywoodHighlands.org, J. Walsh Confidential. This makes no sense. A $50,000 gift from something called Turf Terminators to build a drip irrigation system for the LAPD police station. Hey, we're in a drought. The mayor has suspended all irrigation systems in the city, while what you wanna do now is spend $50,000 to build an irrigation system in this drought city, in this drought state, that you will not be able to use. Use a little sense. Take the $50,000 and give it back. We don't need a useless irrigation system, we are now in a drought. All irrigation systems are closed in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Barajas. Please come forward, followed by Mr. Previn, followed by Mr. H.
Well, this is probably the first time I've ever done this, but John Walsh is right. We are in a drought, but some of the politicians don't understand what that even means. You're not gonna fix it with short-term solutions or tiki-taki stuff. What you need is what I've been calling forth since 2013, since I've been coming down here, actually, I think this is my second year anniversary. You need projects, water projects, so you won't have to do this, where you think you could hide the fact that we're in a drought. And since life depends on water, if you don't produce it, you're gonna kill people.
Mr. Previn, followed by Mr. Herman.
Thank you, President Labange, President Wesson, I appreciate the introduction. This is Turf Terminators, and those who were listening closely, as I was, to the mayor last night know that this is a motion actually in support of what he was talking about, which is a new initiative to work with the police out in Mr. Englander's district, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong on that. As a trial, they're going to Turf Terminators, who do provide a very interesting kind of alternate landscaping environment that is low water use, and they are in business, I think, with the DWP in the city in terms of getting credits or rebates for people, which of course is a very good idea, and I absolutely support this. I think it is important to know that they are owned by a Wall Street firm who has set aside, you know, lots of money in order to roll out this program, and are helping us in our pursuit of this drought situation. Of course, they're not interested in making money in that regard. Well, I'm not gonna, that would be inappropriate to speculate about that on their behalf. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Herman. Oh, yeah, Mr. Herman, please come forward.
Most importantly, ideology still dingaling on such foliaries and foolishness, as we all know. For a new landscaping in Los Angeles LAPD in the valley, Mr. Biggers stepped away because he doesn't wanna take the criticism of why we disagree with such a system. We need man-made climate change, not spend money on a drought, you dumb. And so I say to all of you in the city of Los Angeles, if we must refrain from utilizing water, wasting water, drought-tolerant plants, then why can't the city of Los Angeles save us some money doing so, as Mr. Krikorian stuffs his mouth with his lunch?
Stay on the subject.
And again, I say to all of you, listen to LaRouche, because the most important thing in life is-
You're not on the subject. Okay, let's, Mr. Price, are you on this, or do you inadvertently?
Inadvertently.
Okay, so let's remove Mr. Price from the queue. Members, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, well now, I think, Mr. Clerk, move into fourth with on the, what is fourth with? So we're going to general public comment?
Yes, sir.
Well, first, we gotta close this and go back to the regular.
Yes, sir. We should adjourn the special and return to the regular.
Okay, so we're in the regular, we're now at public comment, general, Mr. Martinez, Harriet Elliott, and I have a Greg Sartan or Sartain, so please come forward. Please come, and you're disrupting, please sit down. Go right ahead.
My name is Harriet Elliott, I'm in your district, Councilmember Wesson. I brought to you at one time six letters asking to close my son's case. And I'm gonna stop early, Mr. Wesson, so you can answer me. What are my chances of a resolution by this LA City Council to ask the LAPD to close my son's case? I've paid my investigator $3,000 for my beautiful black son who is killed. Okay, he did not have alcohol and drugs in his body, that's what the autopsy said. I wanna know my chances of this LA City Council asking them to close the case so that my private investigator just can ask what happened to my son, he can question witnesses. What's your opinion? You have 11 seconds.
I'm gonna have the city attorney quickly respond.
Because this is general public comment, and this matter is not on the agenda, there cannot be a discussion on something that's not on the agenda.
Can I get with you to ask afterwards how to do that? Yeah, okay.
We'll get staff to come over and chat with us. So do I have Greg Sartan or Sartan, then I have Mr. Barajas again, I have Mr. Walsh. So, please, Brian, come on, whoever close, let's get on up. Henry, I'm gonna call you, Maureen, Juan, let's keep it going.
All right, so I turned in several items for the, here. First, brownout science in California must lead the nation in scientific recovery. This goes into weather modification, ionization, Mexico has done this, Australia has done it, and other regions in the Middle East have tested this unique system to make it rain, ionization, the other is desalinization plants over top-down of the coast of the Pacific Ocean. The other is LaRouche. If anything happens to Natalia Vetrenko, Victoria Nuland must be held responsible. This gets into the factor of sponsoring Nazism in Ukraine, and the State Department knows it, especially Nuland. And this is what we're trying to do here. If you wanna prevent Nazis from killing you, join us.
Okay, thank you. So who do we have? Identify yourself, and then if I could get this Mr. Sartan, and, you know, Henry, you can come right up. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Leah Renee. I'm here to discuss 283 Trino Way with you. They have 14 permit applications, which are actually an inspection, application for inspection, and they have new coastal development permit, they have no, they have two orders to comply, and you're keeping their permits open. I don't understand, Mr. Bonner, why do you allow 283 Trino Way to keep their permits open when they're in violation of the law? Why do you allow them to keep their permits open, knowingly violating the law? You know, so I wanna know why you continue to cause me harm and allow 283 Trino to knowingly violate the law. Bringing that to your attention, I'd like those permits rendered null and void pursuant to LAMC 11.02. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh, I see you standing back there. Mr. Maureen, Henry, I called you.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. If you go there now and you're in this building, my website is blocked by someone in this building, take a look at it if you're in this building, and in fact, I'm told somebody from Mr. Bonner's office that I said something about yesterday. Okay, hit-and-run drivers, as we said, it's an epidemic. What is the cause of the epidemic? Not lower rewards, the cause of the epidemic is alcohol, drunk drivers, and we have more liquor licenses in this city per square mile than any other city in America. You actually had something on the agenda, on the agenda here, that would have denied a liquor license after a 7-Eleven, but that 7-Eleven got it pulled off because, correct me if I'm wrong with the facts, not a single liquor license, other than one, has been denied in the past 25 years. The blood of everybody killed by hit-and-run driver is on your hands.
Okay, Mr. Maureen, I see you out there. Mr. Akala.
Yes, you all received a copy of this on the 1st of April, and you're fully aware that public funds were diverted from city and hack the paychecks in Lasers and Calipers trust accounts longer than the law allows. You know that California Government Code 20283 requires that workers employed past 1,000 hours be enrolled in public employee pension and benefit plans. Yet, today is payday, there's been no changes. You've been diverting 1,120 funds into union benefit plans for the benefit of public employees. You've been taking the 1,100 funds and 1,190 funds and skimming 10% and calling it a discount. Now, how long are you gonna keep this shit up? 'Cause shit stands for sheltering Henry's income in time longer than the law allows. So, I can't help you.
Thank you, thank you. So, Mr. Previn, whenever you get up here, Mr. Akala, I got a Greg Stanton, I got a Miss Lisa. Come on, Juan.
Yeah, Henry knows shit. He works for the city, opening up pipes, you know, shed pipes, so he knows shit. Anyway, you made such a big deal, every year you make a big deal about the Holocaust, and yet you send the LAPD every night to harass the homeless. How does that make you any difference that the Nazis? You don't let the people rest around the city. You send the people in blue, which they do not really wanna work for that, they wanna, they join the police department to fight crime, not to fight homeless people. You're a bunch of idiots. You need to make different laws that will give everybody a place to live. And then you make a big deal about Mr. Robinson Baseball. Well, you threw away a lot of people to create Dodger Stadium, you destroyed a lot of housing.
Thank you, Mr. Previn, and are you Miss Lisa, Mr. Herman? I will call, come on, Mr. Previn, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Commodore Wesson, it's Eric Previn, and today I would like to just raise some questions for Controller Galperin and Mayor Garcetti, who I've asked diligently, and I've tried really to get a look at some appraisals for 4230 Coldwater Canyon in connection with the mayor signing over that city surplus fire department to Richard Weintraub or one of his many LLCs, which I think everybody is eager to get moving because of the Sportsman's Landing, thank you, sir, from Second District, and yet, none of those appraisals have been brought forward, number one. Number two, there was a payment, a deposit that was supposed to be made, and I have asked for proof of that, just so that the mayor can, with assurance, understand that all the terms have been arranged, because it did look below value when we were looking at it. We didn't know at the time about Sportsman's Landing, sir, because we have a notifying the local residents problem here in Los Angeles, and we need to address that. And I think that there's also a discrepancy as to whether or not a public hearing is required, as it says on the city planning document, versus what came out at the meeting with the 27 on both sides, people who said there is no-
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Herman, please. Thank you, Mr. Herman, please.
Do I have your full attention? For this acronym, meaning "fuck you," means "fully utilize your constitution acknowledged to yield the unions." And I say to all of you regarding item 28, which was deferred to number item 16 of the 7-Eleven, we have become the hit-and-run capital of the world. Judge Dean Ferguson's son did not deserve to die on the hit-and-run on the Santa Monica Mountains bike ride, and yet, we have all you politicians grieving atrocities, hatred, racist, hideous acts against mankind? What about the homeless people on the streets of Los Angeles, right here by Trade Check? Again, genocide, a Holocaust, and you wanna grovel in your long presentations? I've been here since 10 o'clock. It is now 1:36 F.U.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Mr. Clerk, before we move forward, I wanna announce that the Public Works Committee will meet today at 2:30 p.m. That ends general public comment. That brings us where?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
They are posted and referred next.
The desk is clear.
Okay, announcements. Mr. Labange.
I thank all Americans for paying their taxes, and those who file late, just make sure you pay them when you're ready to input that form for the IRS.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Can we all rise for adjourning motions? I will be looking to my right. I don't see any to my right. I'm now gonna look over to my left. Mr. Buscayino.
Thank you, Mr. President. A champion in the philanthropic community, Len Obi died last week, executive director of the Annenberg Foundation Trust, Leonard Obi, at age of 56, following a fight with cancer. A highly respected individual who made a career making the world a better place. As the executive director of the Annenberg Foundation, one of the largest family foundations in the United States, Len helped grant $2 billion to more than 2,500 nonprofits in 28 countries in a wide range of program areas, such as education, culture, arts, the environment, animal welfare, and nonprofit capacity building. Leonard also served for 15 years as an executive with the California Science Center and was essential to the relocation of the Annenberg Foundation of the City of Los Angeles. Len Obi was a knowledgeable and passionate advocate for the ocean and was pivotal in developing the unprecedented public-private partnership with the Port of Los Angeles named Alta Sea. His vision foresees Alta Sea as a place for the businesses to collaborate on ocean-related solutions and opportunities. In fact, just last month, we dedicated a street that Len was able to witness alongside Mayor Garcetti, the Len Obi Way, in front of Alta Sea. In recognition of Len's many contributions to the City of Los Angeles, as I mentioned, the section of 22nd Street between Signal and Minor Street, in front of the future culture and education destination Alta Sea, was named Len Obi Way. And Amy Agar here, thank you for joining us, just for this adjourning motion. Amy, representing Alta Sea and Rachel and the entire team. Len is survived by his wife, Robin, their two children, Kyle and Katie, his father, Len E. Obi, his mother, Aida, his sisters, Flora Obi, Maria Martin, and Irene Akimama, and his brother, Robert Obi. In lieu of flowers, memorial gifts to advance the cancer research under the direction of Dr. Zev Weinberg can be made to the Johnson Cancer Center Foundation. Len will be truly missed in the City of L.A. He inspired me and others in the City of Los Angeles to do what's right and to fight for programs that need as most help as possible here. So Len, may you rest in peace, and thank you so much, Mr. President.
Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, just like to acknowledge that today is the 150th anniversary of the death of the great emancipator Abraham Lincoln, and like us to adjourn in his memory today as well.
Thank you, sir. I'm still looking to my left, Mr. Fuentes aside. I don't see any more adjourning motions. Members, this meeting is adjourned.